Okay, now that Colleen's here, we can start. We waited for you. She's going, "No, you didn't, Lisa." Okay. We're gonna bring the meeting back to order, and when we left off, we were going to have the resolution rewritten for us so that we could come back, read it, make sure it says what we wanted, and vote, and we are working on Resolution 2016-799. So, has everybody had a chance to read over the resolution?
Can I? I have a question. I want to make sure that this doesn't end up being a precedent that people get cited for. Well, here he corrected, he made the corrections, and therefore you're not nailing him for those violations. And what I was really thinking of was just dealing with the things he has not complied with, and stating that those violations were there, and they're still there, without seemingly to imply that, well, if code compliance says you have to do this, and you do it, why you're never gonna get denied unless that is our approach. But my understanding is that there are times when we say, "Wait a minute, he's been in violation of this, he or she, since the beginning, and we're still gonna nail him." Do you understand what I'm getting at?
Yeah. Yes, I do understand. I thought that's what I was trying to do. I, you know, I see that we do have the reference to the other violations, and the fact that he did correct some of those.
Yeah, well, that's, that's, that's the question I have. Do we want to, and I'm not sure it's clear that he corrected every other one, it's just that we were not clear that he had or had not, like the generator and this sort of thing.
So, that's completely different than what you said when we left here. You said, "Strike, strike, 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 strike."
Yes.
So, do you just want, I mean, so now you're wanting to reference all of it again?
No, I want to take out the references to the things that he complied with and the other violations.
Okay, I thought you were saying the opposite, I'm sorry.
And I'm, I know how things come back to us as, "Well, you've done this before," and I don't want this case to be one where people say, "Well, except for these things he didn't do, all these other things he did, and you validated that if he'd done that, why he's home free." I open to any...
Well, I think that is sort of the precedent that has been set, and certainly, I mean, we could say that, you know, where I say between April 11th and May 3rd, you know, within the timeframe provided by code compliance or allowed by code compliance, something like that, if that's, you know, would make it feel...
That's fine, that's fine. I just, I just raised the question.
Okay.
If, if that's our precedent, why?
Well, the precedent I'm aware of involved a completely different code compliance form that said in effect, "This is what you need to do to come into compliance with the urgency ordinance." That does not, that is not in this case.
Right.
And so, Mr. Lattish's point, if I understand it correctly, is we're trying to avoid some implication that as long as code compliance strings people along, they're just fine, and when it gets to the commission, if stuff is corrected, even though they were in clear violation, and it could have been denied at any time, they are now relieved of the obligations or the effects of that non-compliance.
That better stays than I did.
And so, the only thing that we're concerned about here is the hoop houses and the wiring. And so, I agree with Commissioner Lattish that it should say something that they observed violations, and this was not corrected and remains uncorrected.
I would agree.
So, I propose then that we strike the, after observe, the camping, everything down to unpermitted hoop houses with hazardous electrical and ingrading without permits, junk and debris. So, we'd read, "During a compliance-based site inspection on March 22nd, 2017, code compliance observed numerous violations, including unpermitted hoop houses and electrical grading." Period. Mr. Garner signed a 10-day correction list from code compliance to correct these deficiencies." I would skip, or strike the next sentence. Well, I strike, let's see. I would strike the part up to noted items except for, and I would say...
Can't you just say that he did...
Mr. Garner did not provide documentation of correction for building permits for the hoop houses and electrical wiring. How's that?
That sounds great.
That's good.
Okay. Then, with those amended corrections, can we have, Madeline, could you read the resolution recommendation?
Yes, so, planning staff recommends the Planning Commission adopt Resolution 2017-069 as amended, thereby upholding the planning, excuse me, denying appeal 2016-799, thereby upholding the Planning Director's denial of commercial cannabis registration 2016-799.
Thank you.
I so move.
As amended.
As amended.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Need a second? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Four, zero with one absent. All right. Moving on. We're gonna change presenters now? Yeah, thank you.
Oh. For anyone interested, this action is appealable within 15 calendar days to the Board of Supervisors. Otherwise, it is final.
Thank you, Susan. I know. Oh, really? Can't say we didn't offer when he goes and watches. Why am I having an issue with this? Colleen, there is an extra one here, are you looking for one?
Uh, there's some up here, thank you. I was getting the other one.
Okay. Do you have an amendment to that?
Well, I, and I did submit a late amended declaration of the exhibit, and so I brought 18 copies of the complete brief exhibits and amended and signed declaration, so I can have probably as far as housekeeping goes, easier to manage copies for everyone. All in one piece.
Doesn't have our notes on it, though.
Yeah, that's correct.
Would you like a copy that he has put together? Does anybody want a copy of that?
No, I think I've got my collection.
Got your notes, yeah.
Yeah, that is the amended declaration that we just handed out to you.
Okay.
And I will submit I have signed, we weren't able to execute the signature on the declaration prior to this point, but it is now executed. I endorse.
Do you want a copy of that, Annette, you want a...
Sure.
There's no changes.
Yes, you can give it to Annette.
No changes to the declaration.
And then I, can you get an extra copy for legal too, please? Thank you. And... Is Julie gonna be back, or Ethan, you're covering?
Oh, I can represent you guys.
Well...
I'm sorry.
It's okay, we can handle it. All right. Recommend we wait or carry on? What do we want to do here?
Let's carry on.
This is tricky. Okay.
Keep going, carry on.
Keep going, oh, you want to keep going?
Keep going and carry on, yeah.
All right. So, Paul, I'm sure you're getting ready here to go on your presentation.
Yes, as I said.
All right, ready.
Ready to go?
Let's do it.
Okay, Paul Groh with the Planning Department. This is appeal number 2016-832. Jason Molinelli of Archer Norris on behalf of Oral Gabe is appealing a denial of commercial cannabis registration by the Planning Director. The reasons for denial on this registration, first, the registrant engaged in grading and earthmoving on the parcel after May 10th, 2016, for the purpose of establishing the cultivation area. Second reason is the registrant did not produce evidence no later than May 10th, 2016, that cultivation and/or grading and earthmoving commensurate with the area proposed to be developed occurred on the site. And the final reason was the application for registration contained false or misleading information. Just to locate ourselves, this is a five-acre site, it's located at 5340 Haver Road, McCollum Hill, actually, Haver Road comes back this direction here, and I believe it's about four or five miles back into San Andreas. It's located in Section 28 of Township 5 North, Range 12 East. Now, on June 30th, 2016, the appellant Oral Gabe filed for a commercial cannabis cultivation registration for 22,000 square feet of mixed light cultivation area, and he was granted a registration pending for that square footage and type of cultivation area. The first reason for denial was the applicant failed to meet the requirements of Section 1795-165N7, and I'd actually like to read that into the record, please. It's, it goes as follows, "As of May 10th, 2016, all grading and earth movement in the portion of the parcel to be used for cultivation shall have been completed, other than that grading necessary for a proportional adjustment to the cultivation area to comply with the setback requirements of this chapter. A registrant seeking to conduct grading for this purpose beyond May 10th, 2016 must provide the Planning Department with a copy of a current grading permit for this proportional adjustment at the time of submitting his or her application for registration. No additional grading or earthmoving for the purpose of establishing or expanding any commercial cannabis cultivation site shall be permitted after May 10th of 2016." Now, with the application that the appellant submitted on June 30th came the plot plan you see on the screen right here, you can see it shows a 22,000-square-foot cultivation area. Obviously, the boundaries here represent the property lines on the parcel. Over here, it says 5346, I believe, Haver, actually, Haver Road isn't right here, there's an adjacent parcel which you'll see, and Haver Road is actually out over here. A road comes in, this is showing an easement for access going across the property, the cultivation area is sandwiched between that road easement and the east property line. What's clearly designated here are 100-foot clearance from the north property line and an 80-foot clearance from the east property line. This is suggesting this, that this cultivation area is well clear of the required setback, and that no proportional adjustment is being anticipated here. So, the reason for the denial is grading after May 10th, 2016. So, we went and looked at a Google aerial here, you'll see, of May 31st, 2016. The parcel is actually roughly right in here, and you can see the site itself is covered by trees and brush. You can see the adjacent cultivation area. This, this, this parcel right here is also registered by our appellant, and for that registration, he applied for 22,000 square feet of mixed light, and was also granted that. However, on May 31st, 2016, you can see that this site has been developed. However, on our parcel right here, there's no obvious development of the proposed 22,000 square feet of cultivation area. And just forward a few days, this is a county aerial, just taken four days after, June 3rd, 2016, shows you a little clearer what the boundaries of the parcel are. You can see the easement road wrapping through the site, goes out this way. Haver Road is actually down here, you can see, and there's the adjacent parcel that the appellant also cultivated on. But as, again, as of June 3rd, 2016, you can see there's no cultivation area developed between the easement, the access road, and that east property line. If we move forward to August 20th, 2016, you can see that development has played, taken place on the parcel. We now have a clearing of approximately 38,000 square feet, and within that clearing, we have an approximate 12,000 square feet of cannabis cultivation going on. So, because the aerial imagery shows grading and earthmoving for the establishment of a new cultivation area after May 10th, 2016 on the subject parcel, the registrant failed to meet the requirements of 1795-165N7. The second reason for denial was the appellant failed to provide demonstrable evidence as required by Section 1795-165N3A and B, and under those two sections, the registrant must provide photographic evidence taken no later than May 10th, 2016, that he or she has taken demonstrable steps toward the development of a commercial medical cannabis cultivation site on the parcel, and that can be either date-stamped photographic evidence of grading and/or earthmoving commensurate with the area proposed to be cultivated, or it can be date-stamped photographic evidence of cultivation commensurate with the area proposed to be cultivated. Our appellant submitted two photographs with the application. The first one up here on the screen is dated July 5th, 2015. In the photograph, you'll see there's, this is all open field, fairly large, those are large, fairly mature trees in the background, so the scale here suggests to me that that's a rather large open field. There's bare earth in the foreground, there's a tanker truck sitting back here, hoop house frames on the field over there, and a water tank. So, these are the kind of things we'd be looking for if we went to the aerials, which we'll do shortly. Let's look at the second photograph. This is dated simply April 26th. We don't know if this is 2015, 2016, there's really no way to determine what the date is, the appellant hasn't volunteered a date. Actually, it would have to be sometime after that tractor was built, that backhoe was built, other than that, it could be just about a year, I think you could guess. What we see in the photograph is another large open field, you can see that the backhoe is scraping the earth here, we've got a couple of gentlemen working on the site. So, again, when we go to the aerials, we're gonna be looking for some scraped earth, a developed cultivation area, something along the lines that we expected to see from the information given us in the plot plan. So, here we go back to July 27th, 2015. The first photograph was dated prior to this in 2015. So, here, again, the road coming through the parcel, and the east property line would be over here, we're looking for cultivation, grading, something representative of the nature of the photographs in this area of the parcel, we don't see anything there. Up here, we see a large open area, there's a dot there, a white, I looked at that several times, like, there was no way to make out what that was, it could have been a vehicle, it could have been the top of a shed, I mean, take your choice, it's, it's hard to determine, but around whatever that is, it appears to be undisturbed earth and open field, field much like the adjacent field, you'll see where the cultivation took place later, very similar appearance. It appears that both those fields at that time in July of 2015 were undisturbed. Again, there's no, there's nothing there that tells us that what we were seeing in the photographs actually was existent on the parcel. Assuming the other photograph was taken in 2016, we move back to this Google aerial from May 31st, 2016, and again, we are looking specifically between the road and this area over here for a development of a cultivation area. We don't see any open field, this is covered in trees and brush, this area up here still remains undisturbed, however, you can see development actually has occurred on the adjacent parcel, and you, there's pots, there's vents, there's some time and resources going into that parcel, we don't see that here. So, because the submitted photos are inconsistent with the actual conditions that were on the parcel at the time, as represented by the aerial evidence, the registrant failed to provide us with sufficient evidence to meet the requirements of 16, excuse me, 1795-165N3. The final reason for denial was providing us with false and misleading information. Under 1795-1784, the registration of a medical cannabis cultivation site pursuant to Chapter 1795 may be invalidated by the Planning Director if the application for registration contained false or misleading information. And in this case, we are talking about the photographs. As we've discussed before, it's, it was obvious to us that, and the photographs that were submitted, and this could certainly be the other photograph, and this could be other aerial evidence that would contradict that other photograph, but the case remains the same, that the photographic evidence that was submitted in, in no way was representative of what was actually occurring on the parcel at the time, that it was, that the photograph was stated to have been taken. So, therefore, we judge that to be false. It was also judged to be misleading due to the fact that these evidence photographs are provided to show us that we actually do have cultivation or grading, we are taking those demonstrable steps prior to May 10th. So, it was with the purpose of submitting these photographs, the purpose for their existence is to provide that proof, and providing us something that would lead us to think that would be misleading. That pretty much covers my presentation, there was a brief, I will probably cover what Mr. Molinelli will present, and what came with the brief after he responds. If any of you have any questions?
The photo, the lower photo on the TS aerial for 2015?
Yes.
Does that mean Terra Server?
Yes, that is Terra Server.
And we had access in 2015?
No, but they have historical photographs, they go back, they go, we have photographs on Terra Server going back to, I've seen, I believe, back to 2010.
Okay, excellent.
But, yes.
Just wanted to make sure.
No, there's a subscription, you get access to all of their history.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? All right, we're ready for you.
Good afternoon, Commission, Staff, Council, thanks for the opportunity to be heard. On behalf of myself and Mr. Gabe. And thank you, Mr. Groh, for that presentation. As Mr. Groh pointed out, Mr. Gabe's permit application was denied on three grounds, 1795-165N7, failure, or grading after May 10th, 2016, 1795-165N3, A, B demonstrable evidence of cultivation or development of cultivation, and of course, 1795-1784 for false and misleading, submitting false and/or misleading information. I'll start with N7, 'cause it was the grounds first raised by Mr. Groh. The aerial photographs are consistent, they do seem to indicate that substantial grading wasn't performed before May 10th, 2016. However, and you'll hear from Mr. Gabe, if you so choose, that he in fact did begin to prepare and take demonstrable steps, talk about photo two in a little while as, as proof of that. But more importantly, and I set some, some contentions forward in our brief, that the genesis of that late earthwork was clearing of fire debris left behind by the county, and to cut setbacks, make sure those were appropriate, fire roads. But, and, and I heard you speak of precedent, and, and I, I don't want to, I'm sorry to go straight towards that, but it's important that this commission has set a prior precedent that I want to bring back to your attention, because it involved nearly identical facts with respect to the N7 issue as we, we will hear today with Mr. Gabe. It occurred on June 8th, the commission heard and granted an appeal for, for similar circumstances. In that instance, the applicant performed grading after May 10th, or rather, was contacted by Planning who informed that applicant via email that their survey of aerial imaging showed what they believed to be grading past May 10th, and directed that applicant to apply for a retroactive grading permit. That applicant did so to their expense, hired an engineer, pursued the permit, and then was ultimately denied on that, on those N7 grounds. That instruction to that applicant did not contain a determined amount of time with which to comply with that directive from Planning, hey, go get a retroactive grading permit. And that brings us to, to our matter today. And I do apologize for the late submission of Exhibit B, which is a January 25th, 2017 letter from Planning to Mr. Gabe. I wasn't able, I, I, I had heard from Mr. Gabe something to that effect, wasn't able to actually get a copy of that letter until a little after I filed the brief, so I sent that in last night. So, in Exhibit B, that January 25th letter, it directs, well, first, it indicates that through their surveillance, their surveillance of aerial photographs, Planning determined it appears that you've conducted grading past May 10th. It goes on to direct Mr. Gabe to seek a grading permit, and indicates in the last paragraph that failure to do so, or rather, seek the grading permit so that we can continue to conduct a review of your registration. Mr. Gabe did receive that. He went out relying on that promise to, he went out and hired Caltech engineers, got the permit application, began, began to pursue that. Again, in Exhibit B, there, there was no... that. Again, in Exhibit B, there, there was no timeframe specified, do this in 10 days, do this in 15 days, what have you. It was an indeterminate amount of time. So, Mr. Gabay relied on that representation, that, that order, that directive, which in fact is, appears to be a ratification of that grading past May 10th, and going one step further, informing him that should he go get a grading permit, they will continue to review and consider his registration. Where Mr. Gabay's case differs from the appellant's creates an even stronger case for promissory estoppel or detrimental reliance. After receiving that January 25th letter, like I said, he hired Caltech, got them started, subsequently, he received a tax bill, which he paid. Then, at some point around spring of 2017, on a routine visit to the planning department, Mr. Gabay was informed that his registration was in fact denied in December of 2016. This is not in my brief, it's a, it's a fact I just learned shortly after submitting my brief. So, he was informed by Planner Contreras that we reviewed your application, your registration, it's been denied in December of 2016. Mr. Gabay said, well, how is that? I received a letter on January 25th of 2017 saying it's, go get a grading permit, and we'll continue to review your application. He then got a tax bill, which he paid. It's my understanding that Mr. Contreras went and conferred out of Mr. Gabay's site, presumably with other planners in, in the department, and acknowledged that they had made a mistake, and said, informed Mr. Gabay that in light of the mistake they made, he, and that given, he was denied in December of 2016, unbeknownst to him, unsure whether notice was provided, seems as if not perhaps, an accommodation was offered to him which would allow him to make an appeal, even in light of that passage of 10 days, obviously, many months had passed since the December denial. Again, he, he did not receive notice of that. He, he continued then. So, again, January 25th, informed, seek a retroactive grading permit, we'll continue to consider your registration, got the tax bill, maybe in error, if he truly was denied in December 2016, paid the tax bill. Then, as he was continuing, it was June 29th of this year, when he received a formal denial from planning. After he had relied on that January 25th letter, and to his detriment, in June of, of this year, he got that denial letter for just the grounds N7. It was 7/31/17, planning sent an addendum to that original denial of June, which cited the, the N3 and the A4 grounds for denial, supplementing their initial grounds. And, and I, I don't, I don't want to disparage planning, and, and if I heard anyone disparage planning for the hard work they're putting in, I'll be the first one to stand up and, and knock them down. A year and a half ago, planning was tasked with implementing a brand-new permit process, then they were given 1,000 applications, and by the way, that's on top of your workload that you already have. So, there's no shame in making errors, in fact, we're going to get to an error that Mr. Gabay also made, that, that he'll acknowledge. So, it, it, planning's done a remarkable job, but unfortunately, in this instance, it was to Mr. Gabay's detriment. He did rely on that January 25th letter, he did rely on that tax bill, and, and based on that reliance, he spared the expense, and it was to his detriment. We would ask on, on the N7 grounds, that, on the theory of promissory estoppel, and Mr. Gabay's good faith efforts, which I'll, I'll talk about more, and in addition to the precedent set on June 8th, we would ask that the N7 grounds be stricken from the resolution and not considered. Moving on to the N3.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna just try to ask you to pick up the pace a little bit, because technically, you're getting 15 minutes for a presentation, and you already passed that point, but your points are good, we need to hear them, but if you could pick up the pace a little bit, we'd really appreciate it.
No problem.
We don't want to be here till nine o'clock, and we have a lot ahead of us.
No, I know, I know, we sat through the morning, no problem.
We want to hear what you have to say, though, just to be clear about that.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yep. So, the N3 grounds, very quickly, Mr. Gabay will admit that he submitted errantly, inadvertently, mistakenly, a photograph, that's Photo 1, that was given to him by an employee whom he relied on. He may have been remiss in not reviewing it closer, but truth be told, he was not intimately familiar with his own property at that point to identify that that photograph likely was not of his property whatsoever. And it was an honest mistake. How do I know it was an honest mistake? Because he told me, and, and also because he has routinely and consistently done everything that he's asked to, it's really his good faith efforts that can best be shown by the fact that he has not cultivated on that site since getting, or even before, he got the denial in June, hadn't started anything, so he hasn't cultivated in 2017. I'll tell you what, that's unprecedented. That respect and, and respect for the government and the law truly is unprecedented, and, and I think it's a, it's a great showing of the type of character he has. That second picture, April 13th, there's no date on it, it is, oh, thank you, Paul, so, April 26th, there's no date on that, it was submitted in 2016, that when you take a timestamp photo off your phone, if the picture is taken in the year that you timestamp it, it doesn't show the year. So, if that picture was taken in 2015, it would say April 26, 2015. It was ta, if it was taken in 2014, it would say 2014. But, because it was taken in April 26th, and this is, it's irrefutable, I, I used, I learned all about this at the beginning of the application process, and I just tested it on my phone, it's irrefutable. He turned it in June 2016, that picture has got to be from 2016. So that, that picture is indeed irrefutably from April 26, 2016, and the question is, is it from his property? And it is, in fact, from his property. Mr. Gabay will tell you, those two gentlemen are his employees, it's at the very beginning of some earthwork. As you see, the road, this right in here is consistent with the aerial photograph, that's that access road coming in right there. And I would submit that in viewing the aerial photographs before and after that Mr. Groh has, it is such a, the beginning of, of the earthwork, it's so small that it doesn't show up on, on these clearly, and yet, it, it has to be there, with, without, without a doubt, that's that road coming in right there, and that's kind of the area. And I would say that based on that, that being such a little amount of work, it's there, it's there. I mean, we're talking about a satellite shot from space. And, the other, i, i, in the, in Photo 2, there's a porta potty which Mr. Gabay rented and set on his property, and, and that's evident, and that might even be the white dot that Mr. Groh was referring to earlier, but if you look at Photo 2, it's clearly a porta potty which he installed for his workers on or about April 2016. So, I would then say that he has complied with N3, is it A, proof of, and it's either A or B, right? You gotta comply with one or the other, and all of C, he's complied with A. That first photograph was really an, an honest error, he did not have any intention to mislead or, or defraud the county. In fact, it, it really was inadvertent error which we would ask you to forgive, and accept Photo 2 as demonstrable proof of steps taken. And, again, based on your precedent for the N7 issue, we would ask, and his reliance on that January 25th letter, we would ask that you grant our appeal, allow Mr. Gabay to finish what he started with the grading permit that planning asked him to get. And again, because of his good faith and just honest efforts by not growing, because you have that discretion, this is a, a truly a perfect candidate for with which you could exercise that discretion. Sorry for taking up too much time, but again, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Commissioner Worcester, why don't we start down there and work down this way if you've got any questions?
Yes, yes, I do. Looking at the photograph of April 26th, which I think you confirmed was 2016?
Yes, sir.
Okay, does that, in your judgment, show grading commensurate with the 22,000 square feet that he applied to? Because that's the requirement. And you mentioned it was such a little area, it doesn't show up on the aerials.
I would say it absolutely does, and, and, you know, I, I defined commensurate, I wished I would have done that here, it was in another appeal here in the last time I was before you. And I don't have that Merriam-Webster definition in front of me, but I do believe that what he has started in that photograph falls within the definite, the general definition of commensurate. And he wasn't finished, we're not saying that he didn't grade after May 10th, he did continue, we're saying that that conduct was, was ratified, and, and in fact, told to keep, to keep on, you know, go get a, go get a retroactive permit. So, but to answer that question directly, yes, that is the beginnings of, of development that would fall within that general definition of commensurate.
Well, it may be the beginning, but where, where do we have photographic evidence of grading commensurate that is sufficient to put 22,000 square feet of canopy on prior to May 10th?
Right, well, I, I would submit that that's in Photo 2, that, that, that's proof that, and, and that's, that's, that's in April, so conceivably, I would say, he then continued to, to operate and to prepare that site. However, at the time of that photograph, what had been done, you see that one guy there with, looks like a hoe, another guy with a weed eater, you got a tractor out there, I think that fits the definition of a commensurate attempt or commensurate endeavor to develop that for 22,000 square feet.
With respect to the January 25th, 2017 letter regarding getting a grading permit, the letter in substance says it appears that grading in excess of 50 cubic yards was conducted, and so you need a, a grading permit. Now, wouldn't that be the case, that he would need a grading permit whether he was going to try to qualify under the urgency ordinance or not?
Well, so, that's, that's arguably, in, in our brief, we, we contended that what he was doing fell within the exemptions to the necessary, or the requirement to get a grading permit, I think it's 15...
Oh, 5070.
Yep, thank you, GNF or J&amp;K, and, but, that aside, we do acknowledge, I think, that it's likely over 50 cubic yards. If it were under, that would be another individual exemption. We were moving under the, the fire-related exemptions, but, you know, after seeing that letter, I almost see that whole argument as immaterial, based on planning's indication, it looks like you're grading over 50 cubic yards, you need a permit, go get a permit. So he did, hired Caltech, got the application, and started the process. And again, there was no set amount of time within which he were required to complete and submit that permit.
Did he, did he grade after May 10th, an area on which he later cultivated?
I, it, it appears that there may have been, again, and you could ask Mr. Gabay, but it certainly appears that that may have been done, again, almost, I, I see that as, as immaterial based on the ratification of that conduct in that January 25th letter and direction to go seek a retroactive permit.
If you look at the aerial of, of August 20th, 2016, the staff says it shows about 38,000 square foot cleared. Would you think that's about right?
I, I can't represent if that's, I would accept their representation, subject to Mr. Gabay's estimation or approximation. Myself, I, I can't make that determination.
And the staff also says that there's about 12,000 square feet of cultivation? Would you say that's about right?
Again, I would accept their representation, subject to Mr. Gabay, who would have a more intimate understanding of, of what's going on there.
Do you, do you agree that we don't have any photographic evidence of cultivation prior to May 10th?
Um, I would agree to that, that there is no evidence of, of that second prong of N3 before, before the commission at this point. However, I, I know it's, it's a either-or section.
Looking at the aerials that have been submitted to us, going all the way through up until the August 20th one, do you, do you, are you seeing evidence of grading anywhere on this site to accommodate 22,000 square feet of canopy?
Looking at the June 3rd as compared to the August 20th, so everything before August 20th, August 20th, it's, it's obvious it's completed. In, in, in the June 3rd, 2016 aerial photograph, it does appear when compared to the May 31st, 2016, that there has been some traffic and, and some work done in there, looks a little less dense. So I, I see that as consistent with that Photo 2 where they're, they're really getting in there, but, but I, I... But, but I, I do see where, you know, you're moving down. There, there's that more work that obviously occurred between June 3rd and August 20th. Again, at, for when she was ordered to seek a permit.
Well, if the staff is anywhere near correct, that the August 20, 2016 photo shows about 12,000 square feet of canopy, that gives us an idea. You'd need almost twice that much for 22,000, correct?
I would, yes, that's good math.
Okay, that's all I have for now.
Thank you.
So I, I was gonna go to you, but I just wanna ask a quick question while he's on those photos, if you don't mind. You state that we don't really have evidence of commercial cultivation and the growing going on, on this April 26th, 2016 photo. They're just starting their preparation work, correct? Back in, with the photo that doesn't have a year on it, but you swear would be 2016?
That's, that's what I would say. I don't see any cannabis plants in there, but I'm no expert by any means.
Okay, so my concern is that this photo is, according to you, 2016. I have no proof of that, but according to you, it is.
It has to be.
Okay, well, if it has to be to you, great, I don't have "has to be" on there.
May I show you with my, my cellphone? I could demonstrate right now.
No, it's okay, because the photo before that is dated July 5th, 2015.
Correct.
Showing he is cultivating, but you just said he wasn't cultivating before that date.
No, that, that picture, it, I think we understand is not from his site. It was given to him by an employee whom he delegated. Hey, give me pictures, can you get, get me the pictures? And, and that guy gave him a bunk pitcher, really duped him. And Mr. Gabay's only mistake was maybe not verifying it, but under a time crunch and not having a really truly intimate understanding of his, he submitted it. But he, he did not intend, intend to defraud. In fact, he will recognize that that first pitcher is not from his property.
Okay, I'm sorry, you can... That was your question, okay. So Commissioner Ladish?
Yeah, you say he's not, wasn't familiar with the property. He was established as the cultivator next door, right?
Right, and, and I don't mean to say he wasn't familiar with his property. But to take a look at that, and, and in the time he spent, wasn't sufficient, really. It was an, it was a mistake, an inadvertent error. Had he lived on that property for 30 years, maybe he would have said in a second glance, what's this, look at this hill in the back. But rather, you know, it all looks the same out there to...
He was the applicant, and he was responsible for knowing whether the pictures...
That's exactly right, you know, and, and that's important. He's accountable at the end of the day. But, you know, sometimes people are victimized, and it's not a huge victimization. But he was duped, and there's been precedent in front of this board, the FASHing appeal, where someone was a victim of fraud. And this was a tiny fraud, but it was either through the laziness of one of his employees or with mal-intent to dupe him, an employee that is no longer with him. So, so that it truly was an innocent inadvertent error. He submitted in a time crunch.
Yeah, unfortunately, we got, some of these come in, kinda come into the dog ate my homework sort of category.
Absolutely, and that's not what we're, what we're here to do. And I think that's why I'm forced to recognize he's not growing.
The April 26th picture. I astounded that some, that this, obviously this bulldozer is out in the sunshine, cutting a swath. And, and there's considerable amount of, of relatively clear property that's where, you know, whatever this brush is, green brush is growing. And I just don't, I, I have a very hard time figuring when you look at the aerials from May 31st, 2016, and June 3rd, 2016, that we could not see this anywhere. And you indicate, oh, well, there's, I think you said, there's the outhouse, and you can see it in this other picture. And I, I'm not sure which other picture it was, but I, I think the other picture that you were looking at at that point, where that, that white structure was off the property. So I think, do you, do you spot this outhouse that's in the April, or whatever, this small white building? You spot that in another picture?
No, and I couldn't see it when, when he, when Mr. Grow recognized it, but I just made that connection. You know, the outhouse was rented, put on Mr. Gabay's property by himself. Those two guys are his employees. You can ask him and weigh his credibility.
You don't see that, you don't see that outhouse in another picture?
I don't, and, and it, it is under the trees. I don't think you could see it from the satellite taken today, where it's still there.
I think you could, that, if, if the outhouse were the issue, I think you're right. But this, the fact that this, what we are seeing in that April 26th picture is at least 100 feet of clearing, relative clearing, with low line, green brush, and then, of course, this swath of bulldozed land. And I just, I don't see how that could be, that open area could be hidden in these pictures of June 3rd and, and May 31st.
May I explain?
Sure.
Mr. Grow?
I wish you could.
Would you mind, yeah, me too. Can you pull up figure three one more time? So, and I said it before, and I'll say it again. So while figure three is coming up, which is an aerial image, right here appears to be some sort of road that is right there. That's our understanding. And so that right in here, this area is where they're going. And you could see undergrowth, shrubbery, that sort of stuff. And so what I said before is that it, it's not a lot of work going on in that picture. You said about 100 square feet, which is probably accurate. I think...
I didn't say 100 square feet, I was saying, you can see for a distance of 100 feet. So it's more like 1,000 square feet.
Okay, I would submit, had, if you zoomed in, you would see that there. And, you know, it, it, it comes down to Mr. Gabay's testimony, who I'd like you to hear from. And, and again, it's up to you to, to judge his credibility. He, he's gonna tell you, he put that outhouse right there. Those are his employees. He had them there on that date, that is April 23rd, 2016. And, and then from there, I understand if it's a dog ate your homework situation. I know that's what you hear all the time. We're not here to do that. We just wanna make an earnest and candid testimony and let you go from there.
Well, maybe instead of my asking you the questions, if you wanna have Mr. Gabay answer them, that'd be fun.
Well, I'd like to ask some questions before we go there. You had indicated he got a denial letter in December of 2016.
I did not. I, I said he found out on a routine visit to Planning in spring, around late spring, early summer of this year. It was just a routine visit, and Planner Contreras told him, oh, I, I can't help you here, you were denied in December. Mr. Gabay said, what do you mean? I, I, I had no knowledge I was denied in December. I got this January letter. So that, at that point, he learned he was denied in December. And Mr. Contreras went, had a discussion somewhere, came back and said, no, yeah, we'll, we'll send out that denial letter, but you were denied in December. But we realize your appeal is past due, we're gonna go ahead and let you appeal anyhow.
So you're saying he got the denial letter in January, not June?
No, he, he didn't receive a denial letter until June of this year.
He was in in January, told he was denied in... This isn't making sense to me, I'm sorry.
The January 25th letter is what...
Got it, okay. It's been explained, I get it. Okay. Then go ahead and ask her, Mr. Gabay, if you have your questions.
Good afternoon.
Oh, so...
Hi there.
And by the way, I think it is highly admirable that you didn't plant this year.
Can you state your name for the record, please?
Or Tal Gabay.
In paragraph four of your amended declaration, you say, "In early 2016, prior to May 10th, I began to take demonstrable steps toward developing the subject matter." But it's unclear to me exactly what steps you took before May 10th.
So could we go back to the picture of the, the July 5th one first? Okay, I, that, I thought it would maybe be my property. I only moved there about a week prior. I was not too familiar with my property. The person who I partnered up with, who was supposed to help me with cultivation, told me that it was. He's someone that's not too happy, we parted ways. So that was, that picture could not have even been anywhere of my knowledge, because I've only moved to Calaveras County about a week prior. Then the other picture. Okay, so, there we go. So we started, we started clearing up the area. Probably did most, most of the work was, um... What's the word when you're, uh... What do you use? I'm messing up the word. We, we cleared it with the tractor first, and then we stopped, we stopped everything because then ordinance came out. So we didn't continue, we didn't continue clearing that whole area with just a weed eater. I guess the, to cut, to cut everything out there. We left it as is for about a month and a half, or a month or so. And we cultivated it on the year prior, about September of 2000, August of 2015. If you go to the first picture of the old one, before we, where is it? This one? Yeah, so that, that whole area up there where the, where the line is going through, that was where we first cultivated. And then after, that was, that's right by the property line, the top. It even goes a little bit more than that. And that was the first, that's where we first started cultivating.
Okay, excuse, excuse me for a second.
Sure.
Just to clarify, so that, that first picture, which we all understand was not on your property? It was that... You, when did you, when did you move to Calaveras County?
In, in June 2015.
Okay, and then you started cultivating up there?
We started cultivating about a month or two after, in that, in that particular area, trying to get a last-minute crop before the end of the season. And that was in 2015. And then we started preparing in about April of 2016 for the new season, before the ordinance came out.
In the same area?
In, in the same area, right. Where, where I guess that, that, where the line is going through. You see that open?
And that, that is not the area that you ended up with your cultivation in 2016?
Right, no, it wasn't, because this is where the property line is. So I was told that you, you know, in the ordinance, you have to move it 75 feet. And 75 feet would bring it, would, would take this whole area out of there, because that's about 75 feet. And then we moved it to over here, where the, where the fallen trees were and the burnt brush was.
Yeah, now that was the other, or another question I had was if we could have the, well, after the Butte Fire pictures, so...
Yeah, perfect.
Yeah, now, on that picture, where, where was all the burnt, burnt trees and the piles? I was thinking that was...
This entire area. There was, most of these trees were, fell not, not really by me. I don't know if it was the county or PG&E. So that was, this was all on, you know, just covered up with fallen trees. And, and this one was, most, most of it was pretty clear, as you could see with the, with the picture with the two people on there.
So between April 26th, when you say this second picture was taken, and May 10th, I assume you kept bulldozing, and you kept grading?
No, not, it's, we kept grading from when? Say it again?
No, I mean, April 26th, you, of, of 2016.
Yeah.
Which supposedly is the second picture. And that's, I mean, the, the, you made about like three passes with the, with the...
Right.
With the equipment. I assume you didn't stop on the evening of April 26th?
No.
You didn't know what was going on?
We, we stopped.
As far as the ordinance, you just, you kept grading, correct?
Not completely, we stopped, we did stop grading. That's when we had a falling out, we stopped everything, and then the ordinance came about, and that's when we started, if you go to the clear picture of, of the grading afterwards, I think it was in August of 2016. There we go. So that, that was after, it was in between, between end of May until June or so, something like that. We continued grading this entire, this area over here.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm talking about up till May 10th. I mean, it's April 26th, there was work going on. When did you stop that work?
Maybe a few weeks afterwards.
Okay, so there would have been at least four times as much cleared by then as what's shown in April 26th?
Yeah, the dozer, the dozer did this area, that, that first area that you've seen, like when you, in the picture. And again, I didn't know, you know, the ordinance hasn't come out yet. I don't know exactly where I could or where I can't. And then knowing that I can't do this anymore, or grow over here, I stopped it completely. We didn't continue, we didn't continue clearing out this entire area up until after probably May, May to June.
But the April 26th picture does not show any downed trees or brush piles?
No, there isn't anything. There was never, there wasn't, there wasn't anything over here. Most of them were over here. The, the downed trees was in this area. That area was mostly open, you see? Right there, right there, perfect. And that's what you're seeing. So the, the dozer is around here, that's the, the curve that you're seeing, and the guys are right, one is there and one is there. And that, most of that area was, is already clear. I mean, there's, there was never that many trees even before the fire. It was always, it was mostly clear.
Those, those were your demonstrable steps towards developing cultivation area?
Yeah.
And since it was within 75 feet of the property line?
I had to move it.
You then moved it. But you, at that point, did not seek a, a permit?
No, I did not. I, I, just from asking around, they said because it's in the fire and stuff like that. I just, everybody else was telling me, or being new to the area, were telling me it's okay, or it's not, you know, you're just clearing up what's, what was fallen and stuff like that. So I continued with it. And then when I got, when I got the letter in the mail in June, I contacted, I mean, sorry, January 25th, I contacted Cal State, and then they, they started to work on the engineering.
And that January 25th member, uh, letter, which has the sentence, "In order for the planning department to continue the registration process, you need to provide evidence that a grading permit application has been submitted to public work." What did you take as the meaning of that sentence?
To get a permit.
To get a permit? And if you, if you did get a permit application, the...
The process would continue.
The process would continue. And you did provide evidence of the permit application within, how, how long?
I, I was in the process within, I would say, two months, maybe less than that. It was, Cal State was backed up, and they, they just said that they're, they'll do their best, and they'll do their best, and I was just constantly contacting them to, to get the permit done. Because they said they were working on other ones.
But they, I, I, I'm not fully aware of the permit process. In order to actually submit the proof of an application, you have to get something from the engineers to start with?
Yes, and I have that here.
But what's the date on that?
That's March 27th, 2017. About two months after the, I received that. Because again, they were, they were backed up, and I have that in email as well.
Then, this is actually a question for the both of you. Are you basically dropping the, the argument that the grading was okay because one of the reasons you needed to grade was to move the dead trees and this sort of thing?
Say it again, I'm sorry.
As I understand from the, from the letter brief, that the grading was justified because, in addition to grading for cultivation, you were grading to remove the felled trees?
Yeah, yeah, of course.
I, I, yes. I almost said your honor.
A yes or a no, we'll need clarification.
Sure, I, I think that we acknowledge that there was grading on the cultivation area, which would involve within those two exemptions. And that it was ratified and that you come forward with this. And that it was ratified and that you come forward with this.
My, my understanding is that the, the ordinance says, "No additional grade moving, grading or earth moving for the purpose of establishing or expanding any commercial cannabis cultivation site shall be permitted after May 10th, 2016." I understand there's the exception because of the setback. But, um... This is one purpose. You had another purpose of clearing the trees. But you do recognize that the grading had the purpose of preparing for cultivation, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And again, just, we realize that's what the ordinance says, right? For only, there's the exception in the UO only for doing the setbacks. And yet that letter that was sent on January 25th seemed to indicate that it didn't separate whether they saw setback grading or on the actual...
I, I read the letter differently than you do because the planning department is basically telling you that you had to comply with all the laws under 1795165F under the ordinance. And that includes 1505070, which says, "A grading permit issued by Public Works is required for all site grading activities." And it says, basically, to me, this is, "You either are going to show proof that you have a permit with the Public Works Department to do the grading or we're not going to process your permit anymore. You're done." So, I mean, that's the way that I'm reading this. You should have had that permit as evidence to be able to give to the planning department so they could continue processing. And if you didn't, then there was no way they could continue. They gave you the opportunity to show that you got a permit for the grading and that didn't happen. That's the way I'm reading it.
That's very reasonable. But so also is interpreting this in order for the planning department and so forth. It's also clearly reasonable to interpret the way that Mr. Gabe did. In fact, that was saying that the applicant on June 8th interpreted the email, which was virtually identical.
That one's a little bit different because there was a code compliance inspection. So June 8th, to me, doesn't compare to your issue. They're two separate, two separates for me.
I, I agree that, that, that's a reasonable interpretation. That's not how I, that's not what I interpreted the first time I read this, but I, I wouldn't say that's unreasonable. But certainly, we have a reasonable interpretation that would support a promissory estoppel theory or cause of action.
Okay, well, I think, I think being that if you read 17.95165F and you read 1505.070, it doesn't make a reasonable theory to me. It, it basically is saying, "In order for us to continue processing that application, we need to see proof that you got a permit. We don't have it, so..." That's, yes, you can...
Can I ask Director Maurer if they have accepted retroactive permits for grading that they saw from other applicants?
I don't, do you feel like you...
Sure, I, I can respond to that question there. A grading permit is required regardless of if it's for the purpose of great, of cultivation, whether the cultivation was denied. If they're out there grading, they need a grading permit. We want to see erosion control measures put in place who would make sure that there's not, you know, excess sedimentation and all the other things going on with unpermitted grading, regardless of whether an application's been approved or denied or if it's unrelated to cultivation. The purpose of the letter going out was something we sent out sort of generically to many different cultivators as we identified that there was grading that had occurred. It was like, "Did you get a grading permit for this? If not, go get a grading permit." It wasn't intended to imply that you, you could retroactively grade and then get a grading permit and therefore it would be, or retroactively get a grading permit to, to validate post May 10th grading. There are really two separate issues. One is you need a grading permit regardless. And the denial was based on the fact that it occurred after May 10th. There clearly wasn't any cultivation in this area on May, on or before May 10th. And the fact that we sent a letter saying you need to get a grading permit doesn't in any way validate the fact or, or, you know, grant approval that that was okay.
I understand, but have you accepted grading permits?
You know what, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pull it back because right now that, right now I think...
I know that they have, that's why.
Yeah, I think we need to pull it back and, and get back to the commissioners. If a commissioner wants to ask Peter that question, then I'll go because he's not up for questioning right now. It's us.
Sure.
So I, I just want to bring it back and get back on track. I want to make sure if the commissioners have any further questions because if you don't, we've been pounding this for quite a while and I'd like to try and move it forward in some direction and get some public comment as well and rebuttals going.
So I have a question about the application. You turned in your own application, you filled out your application.
Can you turn on your speaker, please? Thank you.
On your application, you're the one who filled out your application?
Yes.
And you're the one who turned it in, the whole packet?
Yes.
Thank you.
I've got a couple of questions. I'll make it quick. On the April 26th picture, 2016, it looks like some little stakes on both sides of where this grading's taking place. Can you tell us, are those stakes and why were they, why were they there?
I have no idea. That looks like probably the other property, where that, where that roundabout is.
But it seems to be, they seem to be located on both sides of what's being scraped.
I have no idea.
Okay, if you look at the, the aerial of August 20... Can you put that up? August 20, 2016. That's the one that shows the grow. Okay, planning has suggested that the cleared area is about 38,000 square feet. Does that seem about right to you?
That, that area right there is, no, not even close.
How much?
Probably half of that.
So 19,000?
I'd say around there. And I'm only, I'm just comparing it to the other, to the other side on the left, over there, the back row of that. And it's, it's smaller than that, so there's no way that that could be bigger than the grow on the left.
How, how big is this whole parcel?
That's five acres.
And how, how much canopy area do, would you say shows up on this August 20 photo?
15 maybe, maybe less.
15,000?
Probably less, yeah.
Now, when you cultivated in 2015, as I understand it, it's the very top of that photograph. How much canopy did you have then?
Probably about 10, maybe a little bit less than that also.
Did you ever apply for a proportional adjustment by reason of the setback requirements?
I don't understand.
I think you said that you did not grade or cultivate at the same site that you had cultivated for in 2015 because you were too close to the property line?
Yes.
Okay, did you ever apply to the planning department for permission to do a proportional setback so that you could move that part of your grow that was within the 75 feet?
No.
Okay, did you ever get a grading permit for that purpose?
For the, for the new site? No.
Okay, that's all I have.
The reason being because of the burnt trees and moving the brush? If it wasn't burned, I would, I would, I would do, I would do it a different way.
And when I, when I look at that parcel and I listen to his questioning and it's five acres, 23,560 square feet would be an acre. That's more than one-fifth of that land. So I do believe it's more than 23,000, more than an acre.
What, the canopy?
Yes.
The canopy space is more than 22, you said?
So 43, excuse me, 43,560 is an acre. And that looks like more than a fifth of, of five acres. So it's, I think it's a little larger than what you think. I mean, I'm not holding you to it. I'm just saying it looks larger to me than what you think it is. Because that does look definitely more than, than a fifth of that land and if that's five acres. So anyway, I think the commissioners are done with their questions. What we'd like to do is take some public comment now and then we'll give you a second chance to come back up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Is there anybody in the public that would like to make comment on this one?
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Crystal Kisi, Eastside Environmental. The appellant is not my client, but I would like to speak in general to the grading issues. I have applicant, appellants here today and have other clients who've made it to...
Okay, we need to speak specific to this, okay, appeal.
Yes, okay, so grading issues. When do you need a permit? When do you not need a permit? I've never gotten any clarification whether just...
Okay, so we need you to speak to this appeal, not to clarification on other things that you're looking for.
Okay, so I think in regards to this appeal, when to get a grading permit and when to not get, when you don't need a grading permit is unclear. And that sort of extends through a lot of the applications. And I know I'm not supposed to speak about those, but there, there is some kind of clarification about grading that I haven't been able to resolve with, with the county government for, for however many months that we've been working since the urgency ordinance. And I think it applies in this case as well.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment? Okay. We'll close public comment and we're going to bring it back to... You go and then them.
I just wanted to address equitable estoppel really quickly. This is a demur I filed on the 25th. It's the second time I've got to use this language and it sounds like maybe I'll get to use it a third time. Four elements must be present in order to apply the doctrine of equitable estoppel. The party to be estopp'd must be apprised of the facts. That would be the planning department. Second, he must intend that, that his conduct shall be acted upon or must so act that the party asserting the estoppel had the right to believe it was so intended. Third, the other party must be ignorant of the true state of facts. And fourth, he must reply, rely on the conduct to his injury. And that's just the basic requirements for a government entity. There's a fourth requirement. But as to those four requirements, they are, they just simply aren't met here because the appellant was aware of the prohibition against grading after May 10th and he graded after May 10th. And also, the conduct was a letter that was sent out to everyone who the planning department noticed had graded and did not have a permit. It wasn't a unique letter to the applicant. Finally, for government estoppel, the, in order for a court to find all four elements and then apply the doctrine, they have to find that it will not nullify a strong rule of policy adopted for the public benefit. And the injustice suffered by the petitioner outweighs the public benefit supporting the policy. And here we, we have findings in the urgency ordinance under 17.95120M, where it states that where the purpose of the ordinance is to curb the expansion of cultivation sites beyond the ones that have already been created because it contributes to all kinds of environmental harms that are further listed in the, in the ordinance. So equitable estoppel just is not even close to satisfy here. And so there was no, no conduct by planning that they intended him to rely on. He did not rely to his detriment. He simply got into compliance with the county code. And he got a grading permit like everyone else is required to. And as to whether or not the planning director has allowed for as-built grading permits? Yes, he has. And, and the Public Works allows as-built grading permits for any citizens of the county who have been discovered to have done grading without a permit. They then go get an as-built permit. That's, that's normal. The issue here is that the grading occurred after May 10th. And that seems undisputed. And there is no exception, or exception to the rule prohibiting that that applies in these circumstances.
Okay, Paul?
Just leading off on that a little bit. It, it may be a grading permit they're required to go back and get. It may be a hoop house permit. It may be a permit for a garage or a carport. It's part of the urgency ordinance that they comply with the laws of the county, the state. And in doing so, they will have to go back up, they have to go back and pick up permits for work previously done on the, on the project site. The grading issue really is two different issues. There is that fundamental straight out letter that we sent to everyone when we noticed that there was grading going on, on the site. And then, you know, the post, May 10th is a whole different issue. It's altogether different. I don't want to see those two confused. To that extent, there was some argument put forward that there was disqualified for an exemption in terms of maintenance of roads, fuel reduction, fire protection and so on and so forth as an exception under section 1505.0080. This, under that section, there's actually no exemption for establishing a cannabis cultivation area. And we, the urgency ordinance expressly prohibits that. So you can't use this exception. It's like we went out looking for exceptions to fit, to fit the story. That doesn't work. The same goes with the proportional adjustment, okay? We're going out and we're trying to find a, an excuse that will fit our storyline but doesn't fit the facts. There was no permit given to us as required for the proportional adjustment at the time of the, the supplemental of the application. There's no proportional adjustment shown on the plot plan. And furthermore, to make a proportional adjustment, you must have an existing cultivation. There's no evidence that we actually have an existing cultivation here. They are saying they cultivated in 2015. However, we don't see any evidence of cultivation on this site. Let's see here. To the point that Mr. Gabe depended upon his employee as far as providing the photographic evidence. We all know that prior to the supplemental of the application, the registrants to review all of his application materials, check to make sure that they are truthful, accurate and accurately represent, you know, what is going on there. So actually, when we accept the application, we're accepting it on that assumption, which goes to the point that we are assuming that when we look at that plot plan, we can go look at this site and we will find a cultivation area where it's shown on the plot plan. And we will find what's represented in those photographs actually exists on the aerials that we were comparing them to. We don't find that. And to that effect, I'd like to do one thing here. Go back. This is, you see the June 3rd aerial. There's testimony and it is a fact that the fire moved through this area. And you can see that all of this is burnt out here. The trees are all burnt out. You can see they're brown. You can see the green trees down in here. This area's been pretty well fried. Now, that's on June 3rd, 2016. Let me see here, oops, wrong way. And let's go forward to this. So the problem I'm having with this photograph, April 26th, and again, it doesn't have a year there and we're told this is 2016. The trees in the background appear to be really healthy. There doesn't appear to be any burn going on in there. That area was pretty well burned out. And again, we are not seeing the piles of debris and the piles of trees that were cut down that we read about again and again and again in the appeal brief. So I'm really questioning whether that's 2016 and whether it is actually this site. And there is an enlargement right here of the area that's been under discussion where that April 26th photograph, 2016, was supposedly taken. So this is the Google image that's on May 31st. This is a month later. That, that blade was supposedly, that baco was supposedly working this area. It's not there. And again, here's your burnt trees. There are no downed trees here. You can see these trees are standing. Those are not actually trees. Those are the shadows, the dark... Those are the shadows, the dark tree-shaped things you see in the ground. Those are actual shadows of standing trees. So, we don't have debris, you know, piled up, trees cut down. We don't have the grading, the excavation going on in the backhoe that we see in the April 26th photograph. When we take a closer look at this.
Okay. Miguel, do you have something you need to say real quick?
Go ahead. Yes, I do. This is Miguel Contreras with the Cal State Planning Department. Here on, as staff, I just wanted to clarify a few things. Mr. Guebe and his attorney have stated on record multiple times that Mr. Guebe was not aware of a denial prior to June of this year. However, I have a... Or, Mr.?
I think the proposition was that they were informed by you that there had been a denial. That they didn't see.
It could be. I was listening to it on the computer. I just wanted to submit that Mr. Guebe did in fact sign for a denial letter on January 17th of this year. And I wanted to put it in the record.
I'm sorry, that he did, that you sent one out?
That he signed for one certified receipt for a denial letter.
On January 17th?
For January 17th of this year.
Okay. So, I questioned that earlier too because I thought I heard it the other way as well. And then you were able to...
Thank you.
Okay, so it's your turn.
Thank you.
I've got a question for Paul. The, this letter that you say is sent out to everybody who has done grading. What meaning does the planning department give to the phrase, "In order for the planning department to continue the registration process"? That's, that's the phrase I get hung up on. Isn't there an implication there that if you do what we're asking you to do now, the registration process will continue?
I think I would rather have Mr. Mauer address that. You know, but one comment I would like to make about that letter is the rest of that sentence. "To continue the registration process, you need to provide evidence that a grading permit application has been submitted to Public Works." We never received any proof that a grading application was actually submitted to Public Works. They have stated, I believe, that they hired Caltech. And I believe in the appellant's declaration, it actually states that he obtained an application. That's different than submitting, submitting that application. Obtaining and submitting is two different things. But as to the, whether the registration process would continue on that, I would like you to ask Mr. Mauer, please.
So, Peter, we're actually, what they're questioning right now is they're looking at this letter in that paragraph saying the confusion between...
In order for the planning department to continue the registration process, what was the department saying there in the essence?
This was something that was going out to multiple applicants. Just letting them know that they needed to get a grading permit and if they didn't get one, that it could result in denial of their application.
There was no implication in there that if you do submit an application, why would we will indeed continue the registration process?
Well, I, you could read it that way. I think the additional assumption is as long as you're in conformance with all the other provisions of the ordinance.
But here, we're talking about grading. And what they're saying is that this gave them license to go ahead and with the grading permit application, if they did, by then, the registration process would continue. They would not get denied on the basis of the unpermitted grading.
I don't think it will...
That's what they're arguing.
Well, yes, they would not get denied for not having a grading permit. But they could still have been denied, and they indeed were denied, for having done that after May 10th. If they had done the grading in April, they still would have received this letter. And then they would have been okay. But the fact is, we went into this application more detail, so wait a second. This was done well after the deadline of May 10th. And so, whether they got a permit or not, that was grounds for denial. I don't think, I can, I can see how, in hindsight, that this might have been confusing. But I don't believe that it says that if you get a grading permit, you will be approved for any post-May 10th grading.
And the other question is, Paul, was this January 25th, 2017, letter of the denial? Is that, was there such a denial in December? Or is this the first denial letter that went out?
Yes, there was a denial that went out previously. Let me see if I can find it. December 29th, 2016, there was a denial letter sent. And I think there was some confusion as far as when we received this. And I, some of this is a little bit of speculation because I don't remember the exact facts of this and I wasn't right in the middle of it. As Mr. Contreras was here previously and stated, Mr. Guebe did receive that denial letter on January 17th, okay? It went out December 29th, so he was beyond the, I believe that would put him, yes, beyond the appeal period. However, what I think happened, and again, this is not perfect, but what I think happened in the meantime, in the in-between, he received the grading letter. So, I think he was under the assumption that having received the grading letter, he was good to go.
The strange thing is...
I think actually, he appeared at the counter in the planning department asking about the grading letter. And that's when he was informed that he had, yes, been denied.
It's interesting that both, both the letters about the grading permit and the denial are dated the same day from the planning department. I guess they went out the same time.
Well, the original denial is December 29th, 2016.
And that was that date of the 17th. This is separate on the 25th. This was later.
He signed for delivery of that on January 17th.
So, I'd like to go and give him a chance for rebuttal as well. If everybody's okay here?
Just one question.
Go ahead.
Why were there two denial letters?
Apparently, I don't know the specifics. We rescinded that denial, the original denial. And maybe Miguel remembers the facts of this more. There have been situations where we have denied it and then realized on, for the review, that we shouldn't have denied it based on those facts.
Actually, I don't believe that was the case in this situation. Mr. Guebe came to my counter on June of this year, inquiring about the status of his registrations. I informed him that the one in December had been denied. And he acknowledged that he got that. But then he also brought up the fact that he received a letter on January 25th after the denial. And he took it to indicate that if he got a grading permit, that he would, he would still be allowed to continue. I explained to him that it wasn't the case. But I could totally see the confusion and why he would think that. And I told him that I would take it to the planning director to see if he would make an exception, that way he has an opportunity to appeal the original December 29th denial. I took it to Peter and Peter agreed that he could see how it could be confusing. And therefore, he asked me to reissue the denial on that June 29th date. That way, Mr. Guebe actually had an opportunity to appeal. And that's basically what happened.
This is after, Miguel, this is after you explained to him that the letter about the grading...
Yeah, I recall having a conversation with him.
What exactly did you tell him about that letter?
Well, I explained to him that, well, for one, that regardless of denial or not being denied yet, he needed to get a grading permit because of the degree of grading that had taken place. Mr. Guebe was pretty pleasant. He acknowledged that. He said he understood. And I also explained to him that that letter was a generic letter that went out to everybody that, you know, via aerial looked like they did an excess of 50 cubic yards of grading. And, yeah, that's about it.
You did not imply in any way that if he continued with a grading permit, that his denial would be...
Not at all. If anything, I tried to clarify that point, that it wouldn't.
Thank you.
I'm still waiting to hear from you.
I lost track. I made a million notes here. A lot of people talking. Thank you all. Planning, Mr. Gross said at one point, with respect to photo, the photos that when you submit them, planning is, presumes that you submitted accurate photos. But, and that's fair. He made a mistake. Just like we expect planning not to make mistakes, but they do as well. There's been many made here. Not only did they send that January 25th letter out after a denial, they also then sent a tax bill out. And we don't, again, we don't hold shame to that. We understand mistakes are made. The question is, do we forgive mistakes? And we turn to somebody like Ortal and say, "This is somebody of character for whom we should have grant due discretion and forgive his mistake." He's been up and down like a roller coaster in this. I haven't heard of any other occurrence similar and it's unfortunate and it's unfair. And he has, he has, it was a fair and reasonable interpretation of that letter. And he acted on it. So, to the extent he made a mistake, we'd ask that you forgive him just as we forgive planning for the mistakes that they made here. Let's see, pick up. With respect to the photos, the photo too, saying that he doesn't believe that's the actual site, that there's, he doesn't see fallen trees and so forth. Again, that inflames me because Mr. Guebe is, if not the only honest applicant I've seen, he is one of the few. And I don't mean to disparage anybody. And that's not fair actually to say. But the fact remains that he made a conscious decision to respect this government and not grow. So, what, he has no reason to lie. Why, what's he trying to protect? He's not trying to push a crop through to cultivation. He's been, he's been up and down, all over the board. He's been misled. That's, that's been the misleading thing here. He's been misled to believe. It's his reasonable interpretation, that letter, that was sent out to him, that he relied on. It's a fair interpretation. And you have due discretion, although maybe that June 8th case is distinguishable to some extent. There's still, there's still a lot of similarities there that, upon which the board act upon, which you can exercise that discretion again. And I would ask, because of the dilemma that he's been put through and his just sincere and good faith attempts and actions, trying to do what's right, pay his taxes, go and get a grading permit, I would, I would just beg of you that you make a good public policy decision here that encourages people to continue to respect the law and grant our appeal. And quickly, with respect to the detrimental reliance or promissory estoppel, a detrimental reliance theory is kind of the same thing, has lesser degree of elements. I would also say that with respect to the promissory estoppel, we did satisfy those elements. He did, he did rely on that promise to his detriment. And a promise was made, although there's a reasonable interpretation on your side, there's no disputing that he made a fair and reasonable interpretation which he acted on. And the question, I wasn't allowed to ask and no one asked, but I know for a fact that if he turned in a permit with a date subsequent to May 10th, 2016, for grading, his application would continue. He wouldn't be denied. I know that's the practice and policy of the planning department. And I ask that you don't treat him disparately, certainly given his character, that in fact, you follow that past practice and policy and allow him to complete that application. You have to do an application before you get the permit. And that's what's going on right here. And that's all I have. I want to thank you all.
I have one question for your client. Mr. Guebe, the pictures on the screen there. You've been telling us that up there, where, I guess there's no way to get rid of that thing up there. Where was the bulldozer cut that was being made between two rows of fence posts?
This area right here.
Yeah, but I would think that we would see where the bulldozer had bolted.
Right this area. This is a month, this is, when was this picture taken?
May 31st.
And the other one was, what, a month before? So, a month, a month before, it was over here. And then I told you that we stopped everything over there other than the weed trimming that we had to do around that area through whatever that month's time of rain or whatever was going on over there. That's, that's the remains of what you seen.
Okay.
And then when, and I said, I think someone said that there were no trees or anything. I have photographic evidence that, oh, everything over here was completely knocked down. There are some areas that were of trees that were not there. There is a road over here that was, that has been there for many years, which is why it looks very flat when the trees are removed. It wasn't because I did a lot of grading. It just, it used to be an old road over there. And just to go over the, one last thing about the confusion with the letters and stuff. From December, I received a denial. January, I received a permit. I went into Public Works or, I went to the planning department, I think around March. They told me that I need to go to Public Works for a permit. I went in there and that's how I started the Cal State at the end of March. And then after, I think it was two months or something, in May, I received a tax bill, only confirming that, okay, what's going on? There is no denial letter. I proceeded to pay the taxes. I have not grown since then because I wasn't sure if I can or I can't. Didn't want to risk that, but I wanted to make sure that I paid all the fees, so it won't be a question later on. And now, we're, we got here. And then they granted me, Mr. Mauer allowed me, because of the confusion, to, you know, to come back in here and gave me another chance. And that's how we got to where we are now. But it was, I did everything I could, as best to my knowledge. I paid all the fees. I filed whatever I had to on time. If it was a question of a permit, which is very minor compared to the bills, the fees that I paid and the other stuff that I did, I mean, if I didn't do those things, I can understand. But I did, I went above and beyond to make sure I checked every box that I was required to. If I missed something, I understand that and I apologize. And if I was, if I was given the chance, I would make sure to correct it and best to whatever you guys want it to. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay, we'd like to close the public hearing and bring it back to the commissioners for deliberation. You want to start at that end?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Commissioner Wooster, you're up.
Okay. I'm not seeing any evidence of actual cultivation prior to May 10th. There's been testimony that there was cultivation in 2015 of perhaps 10,000 square feet. But that wouldn't be commensurate with the 22,000 square feet applied for, so I don't think it counts if we had photographic evidence of it, which we don't. I'm not seeing evidence of grading, photographic evidence of... I'm not seeing evidence of grading, photographic evidence of grading commensurate with 22,000 square feet prior to May 10th. I don't think the April 26th photograph, assuming it is 2016, which it may not be, provides that evidence. There was considerable grading after May 10th. That's pretty obvious from the aerials and from what's been said. But there was no attempt to justify that grading as a proportional adjustment. There was no application for that. There was no grading permit for it. It, proportional adjustment, uh, provision, I don't think applies to this situation. We do have the January 25th, 2017 letter regarding grading. As, as I read it, it says, "You've graded in excess of 50 cubic yards. If you don't get a permit, we won't process your application further." It doesn't say, "If you do get a permit, your application will be granted." And it may be true that he read it that way. I would not have. But regardless, he didn't get turned down for failure to have a permit for grading. He got turned down for other reasons, which is grading under the urgency ordinance for purposes of cultivation when he shouldn't have, permit or no permit. And so I'm prepared to vote for the resolution.
I'm prepared to vote for the resolution for all the things Kelly stated, and I still have an issue with the picture he submitted with the application. He submitted that application. He got all the paperwork together. He gathered it, whether whoever gave to him. He gathered all the information. He's the one who turned it in.
I agree with Commissioner Wooster's analysis. I think that the, the problematic phrase in order for the planning department to continue the registration process is problematic. Uh, but I think given all the facts of the case, uh, it does not provide a basis to, uh, to, uh, forgive the extensive grading that was done on this, uh, on this property. And I'm, I'm willing to assume that indeed that April 26th picture was taken in 2016 and that it was for the area that was indicated by the applicant. However, it is certainly not an area commensurate with what he later graded. And so I agree with Commissioner Wooster.
Okay, um, I, I did such a god, good job laying it out. It's kind of makes it hard for anybody to say anything else. The only thing that I would say is that on the grading permit and going to, um, Cal Engineering to get them started on it, whether your permit was approved or denied, that would still have to be done. The land has to be corrected and it has to be permitted with the grading. So, um, we have another one that has to also continue with, um, Cal Engineering and repairing the land. It'll never be what it was because it's taken down already, but, um, anyway. So I guess we're at the point where we need to have a recommendation. Fred, please?
Staff recommends that the planning commission adopt Resolution 2017-059 to 9 Appeal 2016-832, thereby upholding the planning director's determination to reject Application 2016-832.
Thank you. Can I get a motion?
Sue moved.
Okay, I need a second. One of you has to claim the motion. You said it together. Okay, so Commissioner Wooster is making the motion and Commissioner Sisk is seconding. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, four, zero, and one absent. And, um, we would like to take a 10-minute break and then we're gonna, Peter's gonna say what he wants to say.
And just for the record, this app, action is final unless appealed to the Board of Supervisors within 15 calendar days.
Thank you. You know, and I want to say thank you to you for being so respectful and polite. It was appreciated. Thank you. Thought, but I do have another job and I had to go tend to one little issue there. Um, okay, so we're gonna call the meeting back to order. And this will be number five on the agenda, 2016-540. And it looks like we have Miguel doing the presentation on this one.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I believe that, uh, Ms. Charnell had a, a request, or Ms. James, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Actually, I'm gonna allow my, uh, my name is Charnell James. Thank you. Uh, Chairman and Vice Chair and, uh, Board of Commissioner members. Um, my client and I, uh, were approached at lunchtime and he actually has a request for the Board for a continuance for two weeks. The property is completely cleared, so this is more a matter of fighting for a right for a permit going forward in the event that the Board of Supervisors don't completely ban. But I'll let my client speak to that directly.
Good afternoon. Thank you. Um, so the, uh, the matter before us, we have a lot of documentation. There's, it's a really kind of complex, a little difficult to get all the pieces together. I've got a box full of documents and, and I was approached and told, "Oh, you were supposed to submit those 72 hours before and there was some rule change or something that happened a couple of weeks ago." I apologize. I was, we were totally unaware. Um, I also have my surveyor that I was able to get out to the property to do a survey. However, he wasn't able to come today because he had, uh, another hearing in Amador County. So, uh, with those things, I'm, I'm asking if it's possible if we could continue, uh, continue it so that I have time to submit these documents. You guys will have-
Okay, so I just want to be clear. You do not have to submit anything 72 hours before.
Okay.
Um, you can bring it here and pass it out. Obviously, we would not have read it and been very well educated, but you do have the right to pass it out here as long as you bring enough for all of the staff and commissioners and have extras for the public in case there's somebody in the public that would like a copy.
Yeah.
Um, briefings have to be submitted before. So we would need, if it was a briefing, we want those submitted before, so we have time to review that. I think, um, based on the information that you're putting forward, I would, maybe we'd like to poll the commissioners and get their input and see how they feel about it because we have a heck of a backlog and we're actually adding days to be here instead of every-
Aye.
-two weeks. We're gonna start coming on a weekly for a little bit. Go ahead.
I can only imagine.
How do you feel about continuing?
I, I have a question.
Oh, okay.
Have you ever reduced canopy size on this parcel?
The, um, the canopy has been completely abated. There is no canopy on, on the, any of the parcels at this time.
So both, both sites have been abated?
Both sites have been abated and, and that's really what's, what's kind of at discussion here is, I do have four applications, four permits. I have four business licenses and, and I paid four tax bills for four separate permits. And there was, um, some question and, and I have documentation and survey work and all kinds of stuff about the placement of one of those gardens. Um, so the, it, the abatement notice is kind of in question because, um, that's part of what, what we want to present and what I, what I wanted to bring forward, uh, to the board. But it has been abated already, so, um-
Is it abated or harvested?
It was abated. Um, and the, um, yeah, so I, I just really feel like this case, I think, is gonna be a, something that's a little bit eccentric from what you guys are getting all day long, from what I can tell. There, um, is some intricacies and I think some really kind of standout points, um, in our, in our case. I know that that's probably what everybody thinks, but-
What's the status of our calendar?
Well, I don't think in two weeks we're gonna be able to hear it. We're pretty backlogged. I think next week we'll probably say a lot anyway on the 17th.
And next week would be fine, so long as you guys get an opportunity to review it.
Yeah.
We literally have a box of documents.
Documents and, and, um-
I, I don't know the exact number. We have probably in the range of four to five appeals coming up on the next three, uh, calendar agendas. We have, the next meeting is scheduled for the 26th. Uh, we have a special meeting on the 2nd of November and then a meeting on the, um, it'll be the 9th of November. And I think all of those meetings are relatively full. Um, four to five cannabis appeals on each one, plus, uh, with the exception of the second, some additional non-cannabis-related projects.
Do you see, uh, do you see any date farther, further in the future that, uh, there would be an open, I mean, a less-
I think that we are going to be pretty swamped for the foreseeable future as long as we continue to process and deny applications. Um, most of them seem to be being appealed. Uh, so it's, you know, I don't know that we're gonna get away, you know, we're gonna find, "Oh, there's only two items on an agenda coming up." So it's, so I, I'd say, you know, whatever the next available agenda is, let's push it to that date and be ready.
We would waive any, of, of course, waive any timeframe even, if the Board comes out and decides to ban everything, then kind of our case is kind of moot at that point anyway. But like he stated, there's nothing, the two offending issues were abated shortly after we filed the appeal. So it's, this is more a fight of whether we get to go forward. So putting it out a month or a month and a half, it's not, there's no, we're not trying to delay time or anything. We're just trying to have adequate time for you to review the documents to be able to have a fair, a fair hearing.
I would suggest that we, if we, if we continue, agree to a continuance, that we continue to a date uncertain that we're both the planning department and the applicant can say, "Okay, this is, of all the bad choices, this is, this is a better one."
This is least bad.
I can, I can work with Mr. Maurer and have that set up. I give that up next week so that that can be reported to the Board of your next hearing. I think that there still needs to be some type of, um, follow-up to make sure that we and Mr. Bauer get our schedules together.
Yeah.
And I'm fine with that, uh, even if you order me to appear at meetings and say, "Yes, we agree to attend the future day," whatever it is that the Board likes.
I think they're looking at the schedule to see what it would even look like because we know we're backlogged and we added extra days to our calendar to deal with what we're dealing with.
I'm just gonna get several would be really good for me.
Might as well throw that in, huh?
Just so for futures, um, Mrs. James, because I know you do, you do quite a bit of representation. Um, I, before you leave, make sure you get a copy of the procedures and hearings about when documents now have to be presented. And if you don't, there's a, a statement in here about, "Don't expect them to be read and comprehended."
Yeah, I have no idea that I'm passing it here.
Okay, but still, when people bring something on the day of the hearing, there's no potential way for us to read it and do our homework and understand what your message is. So you're the ones that lose in that scenario.
Absolutely.
Um, so I just want to make sure you grab a copy of the new procedure so you're educated.
It's on, it's on the planning website, um, under procedures. You click on that, you get the new-
Perfect. I will download it. Thank you so much.
If you can figure out the new website.
If not, I'll post it.
It's a version-
Okay, so-
So looking at the calendar, um, the 26th is definitely out. Um, I think that best would be to continue it to November 2nd.
Okay.
How many are different than the 2nd already?
I don't know exactly, um, but I, I think that would be the best date.
Would you like to take a look at his documentation and see if you want to continue the hearing and look at what he has?
No, I'm, I'm, I don't have any objection to agreeing to a continuance.
Okay.
Sometimes when they have time to prepare better, it takes them less time to present it.
I think, I think, uh, this would be on condition that we're gonna get a chance to look at these documents-
Absolutely.
-well ahead of time.
Absolutely. I mean, I can, I can submit the documents next week. It's just that I really want you guys to be able to have some time with them.
My big concern about granting continuances is that it opens the door for all futures to come in here and go, "Oh, look, you can't do my hearing today. I need a continuance because I'm bringing you a bunch of paperwork." And I don't want to see that be a process to continue into our future because we really have to stay on getting this stuff done.
I think that this, this is a unique case in that the offense has already been abated. This is more an issue of, "Does this permit get denied if the Board allows continued commercial cultivation into next year?" And so thi- this is more a fight about whether or not we have the right to participate in whatever program that the Board may or may not come up with. And that is a very unique situation. We're not, there is nothing properly to protect. So it's not about the, the, the issue of whether or not you can grow or anything. It's whether or not it's a right in the future.
I had my parents drive five hours to be here today. They're, they're-
None of your, none of your speech was getting recorded.
I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry about that. Did you, did you, I didn't see a brief that you submitted. Did you submit one?
I did not on this one. Um, I felt that we were gonna be able to address the issues quite clearly, um, with the exhibits that we had, and I knew we were getting the surveyor. I have the environmental engineer here to speak. I figured that those, given my history with the Pa- Board in the past, I know that you guys prefer testimonies to other things. And so, um, I did not, and I am fine with being limited to not do that in the future.
Actually, I'm not sure that we prefer testimony. We like to get it in writing, prepare ourselves, and then if the testimony's here, that's great, so-
Perfect. I can, I can make that be a condition and we can make it as, as a condition of our approval that my, um, draft statement and all of the exhibits be submitted by next Friday, the 20th.
Okay, so does, do you guys want to do a continuance?
I, I'm in agreement with a continuance.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
You may wish to open up for public here, for a public comment on the request for continuance.
That's what we should have done. Is there, can we see if there's anybody that has any public comment on this matter? No. Okay. All right. Now I need a motion. I have to do this right.
I move that we continue this matter until November 2nd.
Thank you. And a second, please?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Is everybody here on November 2nd?
I've said I'm gonna be here. Is everybody going to be here on November 2nd?
Yes.
I believe so, yes.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Sorry, Miguel.
Are you still good to go on?
Um, are you gonna submit those documents before you leave?
We're, I'm, I'm actually was just talking to the clerk about that. Should I put them in a binder so it's easier to do it and you're not all over the place?
No, because it has to be scanned and we have to take them out. So now we're moving on to- No, because then we have to put them out. Remanded by the Board of Supervisors of 2016-629, appealed by Stuart Alberts.
It's gonna be a fifth document for everybody.
Correct.
Make a copy for everybody. That way I don't have to do it.
Another one, okay?
And I would prefer them not be in binders. But stay put.
Thank you. Okay. All right, Miguel, you ready?
Uh, yes, I am. Good afternoon. This is Miguel with the Planning Department. Today I'm here to-
Speak clearly and loudly.
All right. Today I'm here to present Appeal 2016-629. It's a denial of a cannabis cultivation for, uh, Stuart Alberts. Uh, Mr. Alberts, the reason for denial was, uh, number one, inadequate evidence of cultivation pursuant to 17.95.165.10.3. A-B. A second reason for denial was for providing false or misleading information pursuant to These documents, uh, were submitted with, uh, Mr. Albert's original registration. As you can see on the, on the photo on the bottom, it's dated 9/10/2015. In the photo, you can see, uh, four rows of cannabis cultivation and a fifth smaller row in the background. Upon review of aerial imagery, this image of, uh, June 9th, 2016, the aerial imagery did not confirm what the photo depicted. Staff went ahead and looked back at, uh, prior aerial imagery. So this, uh, this aerial is from 9/17/2015, seven days after the photo submitted was taken. And once more, aerial imagery does not confirm the photo, uh, that was submitted. If anything, on the bottom right corner, you could see on a separate parcel a cultivation area that looks to be like the photo that was submitted. If you compare it, you could see four rows of cannabis and a, uh, small fifth row. At the very front, you could see a, um, solar, solar panel. You could also see that in the, in the aerial. So essentially, this is the reason why the cultivation or the registration was denied because the photo- was denied, because the photo that was submitted was not, was not of the subject parcel as required by 17.95.165.10.3. A-B. And also because the photo submitted was found to be a false or misleading photograph. This, this appeal was heard before by this planning commission back in August, I believe, or June 22nd. And it was denied. Mr., Mr. Frimmer, I believe is the attorney, he was not present. They asked for a continuance and it was not granted by this planning commission. So they, they appealed. Went to the Board of Supervisors. Mr. Frimmer argued that, you know, he did not have a opportunity to present his evidence to the planning commission. The Board of Supervisors took that into account and sent this back here for your consideration of any new information. One of the biggest things that Mr. Frimmer submitted was this aerial, or not aerial, a photograph of a hoop house and, in his attempt to depict cultivation happening prior to May 10th of 2016. In addition to this aerial, this photo, there were other images of the same hoop house submitted. Those images are date stamped, um, May 8th of 2016. However, this is a photograph that was submitted after the fact. It wasn't submitted at the time of registration as required by the urgency ordinance. Furthermore, looking at an aerial of May 31st, 2016, there's still no evidence of that hoop house being on the subject parcel. If, if you could see on the right, there are some, some hoop houses on the, on the, on the neighboring parcel. And you could see how those are clearly visible. You know, granted, the photograph he submitted is only two sections of a hoop house. However, you could, you would still be able to see two sections of a hoop house on the subject parcel. And there's no evidence of this hoop house having existed on the subject parcel prior to May 10th. In addition to that, because of subsequent evidence, the planning department felt it was reasonable to add a second reason for denial. This is for violation of 17.95.165.10.7, which essentially prohibits any more earth movement or earth movement activities happening on the portion of the parcel that is designated for cultivation. In a briefing that Mr. Frimmer submitted two days ago, he, he presented this, this photograph or this aerial, and he, he added some information to it. As you can see, he has indicated encircled in yellow bushes that had been removed after May 5th, 2016. He had indicated that there is a fenced area of around 43,456 square feet, or that there will, there will, there will be in the future, I guess, of fenced in area. And he also indicated encircled or squared in a red box that there is a 10,000 square foot cultivation area that is, that is graded. And he emphasizes that these areas were, were dirt scraped by Mr. Larson, which is a contractor for Mr. Frimmer. And it's, it's a pretty good aerial. The only thing that's, actually, no, it's not a very good aerial. It's, it's kind of hard to make anything out. I believe Mr. Frimmer has, he got a copy of a, of a copy of a copy throughout this whole process and, you know, some of the pollen, he got degraded. So I went ahead and, and underlaid it with a more clear image. Mind you, this previous image is from June 9th of 2016. This one's from May 31st of 2016. As you could see, the areas that are designated as, as Mr. Larson having scraped, doesn't really look like scraping, at least in my opinion. It looks more like somebody drove on the parcel and left tire tracks. And it's certainly not a 10,000 square foot cultivation area. As you can see on May 31st, all those bushes and trees still are still standing in this, this photograph or this aerial. And this is just a, a bigger picture of the, the parcel. And lastly, Mr. Mr. Frimmer contends that there was never any, any grading done for the purposes of cultivation beyond May 10th. In a declaration by Mr. Mr. Larson that states that all work was done at around May 5th of 2016, all, all grading or scraping, should I say. As you can see, this aerial image is from Jul., or June 28th of this year. Encumbriced in red is the cultivation area. And I made sure that it didn't extend beyond the actual plant. So I made the, the control points to actual cannabis plants, you know, as to not degrade it. So once more, this image is from June 28th of this year. And on the same area, May 31st of last year, there is no evidence of cultivation. There is no evidence of earth movement. So when you compare these two pictures, it's indicative that earth movement took place beyond May 31st of, of last year, and certainly after May 10th of last year, which is a violation of, of the urgency ordinance and therefore the reason for denial. Furthermore, in this photograph, or this aerial right here, Mr. Frimmer asserts that that square red area is a 10,000, 10,000 square foot cultivation site, which is that right there. However, based on Google's measuring tool, on May 31st, anything, all the area that had been disturbed hardly equated to 23,000 square feet. So that area that Mr. Frimmer pointed out certainly wasn't 10,000 square foot of scraped cultivation area.
2,300 or 23,000?
2,300. So the claim is that this is 1000, or 10,000 square feet. And according to Google Earth Pro's measuring tool, that's around 2,300 square feet. That's it for my presentation for now. If there's any questions.
Do you have a copy of the plot map submitted with the application showing where the grow area is?
I believe it's in the pack, or in my staff report. I should. I could certainly show you a copy. That's in the application if you'd like.
I'd like to just, if you could just hold it up that way in this way so camera can see it, we can see it. Make a copy maybe?
I could certainly make you a copy.
Okay. You got assistance?
There are a couple of other points I wanted to bring up in the staff report that were raised in the brief from Mr. Frimmer. One was that the evidence is arbitrary and capricious and denies due process and violates equal protection laws. He did not go into any detail of how that was, how that is a violation of due process. It's simply a requirement of the code. And also that the urgency ordinance itself is invalid. We had indicated that we felt that these were not germane to the appeal. He does need to raise these issues if he wants to bring them, you know, beyond this into the board and, you know, to, into court. So in, or I guess in some regard, it is germane. We don't think that there's any real argument, there, there's no argument that was presented to support that. And so we didn't really address that in our code. Secondly, when we added the new reason denial, he was completely, posited that there wasn't sufficient time to address that. Well, that was raised in August of, of this year. And so it's been now a month and a half since that issue was raised. So there's been plenty of time to address this new issue. So we don't feel that those, those issues are inappropriate to raise in this, in this context that the, the grading issue is something that's certainly appropriate to discuss in this hearing and appropriate reason, second reason for denial. And there was no additional discussion of why he felt that the photo's requirement was invalid or the urgency ordinance itself was invalid. So we did not address that in the staff report. I, I guess the other thing I'd like to add is that, you know, the time to challenge the ordinance was when it was adopted. It's now a year and a half later. And this is, you know, the first that, you know, was brought up. So again, we feel that merits of this denial are based on the facts before us. And that's what we base our, our action on.
Okay.
Nice, nice timing, Miguel.
Oh, wow. I'm gonna buy him running shoes.
While this is being distributed, I've got a question for you. Or do you want to finish your?
Um, don't.
He was done.
But if you have any questions.
Okay. If that, well, the hoop house picture that is now being submitted as the proof of, of prior cultivation, what size do you think that hoop house might be, just from the photograph?
Well, judging how there's a person there, he looks to be around, I don't know, like six feet tall. I would say that the length of the foot, the hoop house is around 12 to 15 feet and probably, you know, six and a half feet tall, seven.
See, I don't see the person. We're looking at this.
This is right there.
Oh, that's a person.
Can you see his legs right there?
That's really terrible.
Okay. Unclear to me on, on page three of your staff report, the, right at the bottom where you say the staff did not have access to this most recent aerial imagery. And I wasn't sure which imagery you're talking about.
That was, that would be the 2017 aerial imagery.
Ah, okay. And the attachments, I'm, I, I get confused at some of the attachments. And I'm not sure if their attachments, your attachments or their attachments. Yeah, attachment seven, aerial images A through H. We don't have parcel lines, but we have consistently a house and a pond showing, sometimes the ponds dried up, on A through E. And then when you show the entire parcel in F, I don't see the house or the pond.
The house is not a part of the parcel. It just happened to be that. And that's the best extent.
So it's not on the parcel at all?
It's not on the parcel now. And the reason that the parcel lines are not shown on certain images is because they come from different data sources. So the county aerials aren't gonna have our, our parcel boundaries, but.
Well, I guess I don't understand then what, what A through E is, what we're supposed to draw from those pictures.
So in a briefing that Mr. Larson submitted, he makes the, the claim that a 300-foot road or driveway was cut and that a 10,000-foot cultivation area had been scraped by the end of April at the latest April, or May 5th of 2016. So these pictures were kind of, are kind of a timeline to show how the, the cultivation area has progressed. So if you look at the screen, I could, I'll walk you through it. So the very first aerial is from 2014. That's just to establish context.
Yeah, but where, where then is the par, the parcel line?
The parcel line is gonna be parallel, parallel to this road, around like that.
To the right or to the left?
To the right. The cultivation area ultimately, it's gonna end up here.
Okay, so there is no road cut in?
Uh, no, well, obviously not in 2014, no. But if, if I could continue with this. So this is 2014. This is what the parcel looked like. We go to May 1st of 2016. This is what the parcel looked like. At this point, there is no 300-foot road cut in. At this point, there is no cultivation area, haven't been scraped, despite what Mr. Larson's declaration says. May 31st of 2016, we see what looks to me to be tire tracks, not really a cut road per se. Right here, it looks like somebody came in, backed out a few times throughout time. The only semblance of scraping that is going on is gonna be in this area right here. And once more, this is May 31st of 2016. This one right here, this is June, I can't really see it. The date's blacked out, but it's a.
June 19th.
June 19th of 2016. This is a aerial provided by the Department of Agriculture, actually. And it's, it's kind of hard to see. There's too many shadows, you know, but there's still not that, there's no cultivation area developed yet. Then we move to August 20th of 2016. And all of a sudden, we, we see this giant scraped area. Right here, this is the parcel line. This is from our aerial imagery.
So that, that scraped area straddles the parcel line?
Yeah, it looks to be like it. At this point, I couldn't say for sure where the parcel line is gonna be. I really don't want to venture a guess in that sense. And once more, you know, here's this gigantic scraped area. Based on my measurements with the GIS tool, it was at around 11,000 square feet. Once more, this is June 19th of the same year. So you can see, there's still vegetation here. There's still dry grass here. Here is where the, that would be this area where somebody turned, you know, drove a vehicle and turned, turned around a few times. So that's June 20th of this year. And then we go and here's June 2nd of, I'm sorry, this is August 20th of last year. Then we go to June 2nd of this year and this, the ultimate outcome of the cultivation area. As you can see there, right there, that's cultivation taking place. And this is the Google Earth image of June 28th of this year. Just a close-up look of how there was scraping done, this area did, you know, eventually did get a, a road cut into it.
So if, if you had had the hoop house picture attached to the registration application, would the permit have been accepted?
I myself, I would have, I would have questioned it because I don't see the, the hoop house on May 31st.
Well, let's assume it's, I mean, since it is kind of small, it could be under a tree, I suppose. But would that, would that be sufficient?
To, I mean, in the hoop house image, right there, I believe that's a wellhead, I believe. And I believe in one of the declarations I read that a hoop house was put near a wellhead. You know, as you can see, it's not really under the trees per se. And.
But there was a lot of grading done after.
You know, it's, they pop up. You know, you, you would see the white in contrast to the, the vegetation, at least in my opinion, you know. So I personally would have questioned it and probably the same outcome.
I could not have found that it would have been commensurate with 10,000 square feet of cultivation.
Well, that's, that's really my question.
Okay.
So Miguel, was there any evidence of cultivation at all in 2016 parcel?
The earliest aerial image from last year to the closest to May 10th is gonna be this May 31st Google Earth one. I see no evidence of cultivation on the parcel at all in the form of a hoop house, in the form of a grading commensurate with 10,000 square feet that they registered for. This, to me, is not cultivation. You know, I don't see this as grading for cultivation. I see this as somebody drove in here, looked around, backed down and drove, drove away, possibly a few times.
And when you measured it, you measured about 22, 2,300 square feet when we started?
Go back to that one.
Yeah, 22.
22, 90.93.
Miguel, I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
As to the, the new ground for denial, the grading of land abused for cultivation, is it true that planning knew the grading had been done per the August 20th, 2016 photo?
Uh, yeah, at the time of denial, or actually at the time of the first planning commission. Uh, yeah, at the time of denial, or actually at the time of the first Planning Commission hearing, I denoted in my staff report that there was an area that, or actually, the way I stated it, was the only semblance of cultivation appeared August 20th of 2016, in the form of a large graded area.
But you didn't know it was for purpose of cultivation?
Uh, not that...
Until 2017, is that correct?
Correct, 'cause, uh, that image was published in, in August. I haven't had anything since then, and, um, for all I knew, it was a permitted, a house pad, or a shed, or anything else. Until we get into June of 2018, or, uh, 2017, that's when we see that it was for the purposes of cultivation.
Okay, so the June 28th, 2017 photo that shows the cultivation on the previously graded parcel, established to you that that grading was for the purpose of cultivation?
Correct.
And if the grading was for some other purpose, it wouldn't be a violation, correct?
It wouldn't be a violation in this sense, you know, that, I mean, the, if code compliance went out there and they noticed grading, they would've said, hey, where's your grading permit? But, in this sense, no.
So the, the reason for the late, if you, if you will, reason for denial, was you didn't have the required information to make that determination until June 28th of this year?
Correct. So this image was published June 28th of this year, the first Planning Commission hearing on this, uh, on this registration was June 22nd of this year.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions, Ms.? No, no, okay. Um, would you like to come up and do your presentation, please?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I wish, uh, I wish there were a little bit more room to work here, but we'll, we'll, we'll get by. So, um, first, let me introduce myself. I'm Rick Frimer. I appear here today in two capacities, actually. I'm actually a resident of San Diego County. I am the landowner of these two parcels. They are adjacent continuous parcels. I'm also a lawyer, admitted in California and two other states, and I represent Caliform's patient collective in this matter, so, I'm here in two capacities, and I wanted to disclose that and make that clear.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm gonna confess that, um, until today, one of the reasons I sat here all day is because I was unaware of how you actually conduct these proceedings, so, I was unaware of your fifteen-minute rule, um, and this might take a little bit longer than fifteen minutes, and I'll explain why. In the staff report that you received on, that was issued on October 2nd, there are a number of photographs that were never provided before. And as a result, I've had to work, and the brief that I gave you was actually written before that, and it was actually mailed to, to my co-counsel, my local counsel here, to deliver to you. We didn't realize Monday was Columbus Day, so I guess it got delivered on Tuesday. And so I've had to work the last couple of days just to clarify some of the things in those photographs. So, I'm gonna be handing you a few photographs, um, that might be a little clearer than the ones that Miguel put up, and I thank you for doing that, but it's interesting that the ones that you put in the staff report are actually clearer than ones that appear over here. Uh, but I guess that's, uh, that's par for the course. Okay. So, um, we have actually two issues here, and Commissioner Worcester, hello, by the way, we haven't met before. I wanna come back to, I wanna start out first with the grading, not in substance, but on, on, just, just to get you an idea of the procedure. You asked a question of Mr. Contreras about when the issue arose that gave rise to this latest denial, okay? Which, by the way, is in exhibit one of the, of our materials that we gave you. The letter that we got from Mr. Moore's office stating the new ground for denial is, I believe, August 10th of this year. And that is actually two days after the board hearing on August 8th, where the board determined to remand this back to the Planning Commission for a hearing. One sentence on that, if you recall, on June 22nd, you had a hearing here on this appeal. I was tied up in a trial in San Diego, it was also my wedding anniversary. We filed a continuance request three days earlier, you decided not to grant a continuance, the board remanded it because it simply wanted us to be able to present our evidence. So, this came out two days after the board hearing. I'll point out that this denial, which Ms. Contreras just told you, information was available by June of 2017, did not find its way to us before the board hearing. So, this is actually brand-new. It arose in August after we prepared a brief for the board, after the staff report came out for the board, which was a combination of a staff report that was prepared for you for the June 22nd hearing, and a staff, and a sup, you know, sort of a broader version that was prepared for the Board of Supervisors for the August 8th hearing. We never got to the substance at that hearing, because it was dismissed on procedural grounds and sent back here, okay? So I wanted to clear up the timeline. Now, the reason I think it's important, and I'm gonna discuss the substance of it, but let me just say this, uh, I've argued appeals in over a hundred administrative proceedings in my career, before the IRS, the SEC, public utility commissions, et cetera. I have never seen, in all of my years, and there have been forty of them at the bar, when an appeal is filed, the record below stands. No appellate agents, no administrative agency gets to supplement or change the grounds in the middle of an appeal. This appeal was filed on May 30th, it dealt with the original denial. My view of this, and what the normal administrative procedures are in virtually every state in the country, and the federal, and federal courts, is that when you have new evidence that comes up, whether it's the SEC, the IRS, public utility commission, any other, that could result in a change in the underlying findings, what you do is you withdraw the original denial, or the original letter of, you know, ninety-day letter, whatever it is that you submitted, and you start all over again. That's the normal procedure. So I, I have to say that I was surprised, and still am, that in, um, in the procedures that you folks have, that the Director's Office can continually supplement up until the day of the hearing. Now, that just presents two problems for me here. One is that, I'm gonna give you some additional information that I didn't get a chance to put in my brief because of some recent pictures. Secondly, I'm just gonna note for the record that I believe it is an improper procedure, and what should've been done was, the denial should've been revoked at that point, especially since the board had sent it back, and that a new letter of denial, starting a new administrative process, should've occurred. That is the proper procedure. Alternatively, the dispute with this, and I'll, I'm gonna get to the substance later, is gonna turn out to be the location of the canopy, and whether or not the plants are outside the canopy. Now, if the Director's Office reasonably thought, and I'm not, I'm not casting any spurs here, if Mr. Contreras or anybody else in the, in the Director's Office, in the staff, thought that the plants were not in the right place, and this appeal had already started, the proper procedure would've been to issue a notice of violation. Because if it turns out, as I'm gonna try to demonstrate today, that the canopy in fact existed by May 10th, 2016, and the plants are simply in the wrong place, you simply get them in the right place. And I'll explain why that photograph is accurate, I'm not saying it's not accurate, but I'll explain to you in a few minutes why it is mis, just mislabeled. Okay, so, I wanted to deal with that first. Secondly, I wanna come to a point that Mr. Moore made, which is absolutely true. As you know, under your rules, uh, which by the way is adopted from a state statute, when you come to an administrative appeal, if you don't set forth all of your arguments, you can't preserve them for the future. So in our brief to the board, and in the brief here, yes, you are correct, Mr. Moore, we did raise other issues. They're legal issues, they are not factual issues, I don't expect that you will rule on them today, and I'm not gonna argue them today. They are simply preserved on the record, because if we didn't assert them here, we wouldn't be able to take them to the board, and if needed, to Superior Court. So, the issues regarding the potential invalidity of the ordinance, uh, the ordinance, uh, the application of the ordinance to this case, et cetera, are legal issues, that if a court has to determine, don't involve factual determina, well, they might, but, but probably not, but it's not something that I'm going to argue today, I'm simply noting them for the record. So you're correct about that, and I agree with you, there's no reason for us to take them up today. So, uh, what we have today are two simple, we really have two simple issues. The first is whether or not the requirements of N3, which have two requirements. The first is, there have to be demonstrable steps toward the creation of a cultivation site, demonstrable steps, and either some evidence of earth moving, commensurate, as, as all of you noted, commensurate with the size of the intended canopy, or in the alternative cultivation. Uh, I wanna come to your point, Commissioner Latish, for a minute, about the hoop house. Definitionally, and I pointed out to this in the brief, you think of cultivation as plants, but cultivation under the statute is not plants. The ordinance takes the definition of cultivation from the Business and Professions Code, I gave you the information in the brief. That defines cultivation in the alternative. There's an or in there, it's disjunctive, as opposed to conjunctive. Some of you are lawyers, I understand, I, I assume you underst, uh, you understand the difference between disjunctive and conjunctive, I don't wanna presume that anybody doesn't. What it says, and go read the definition, is, it's either plants, harvesting, all of the steps in the process can be done. We showed you the hoop house, and you're correct, the hoop house, uh, I think, can I call you Miguel? Should I, should I call you Mr. Contreras? Would you prefer that?
Whatever you, whatever you prefer.
Okay. I just don't wanna be, be impolite, but it's easier. That wellhead, I will show you where it is on this site, and we never made a claim, and there is no claim, that the hoop houses you see on Mr. Albert's property, which is next door, it is adjacent to the, I don't know the direction, to the top part of the site. Those hoop houses are hit, are hit on his property, they have nothing to do with this. And we raised that because we do have date-stamped evidence that a hoop house was created. Now, the, the Director's Office, the staff, the question that they have about it is, why wasn't there on the May 31st picture? And it's real simple, we took it down. Mr. Albert took it down. Now, the reason I'm mentioning that is because, under your ordinance, there is actually no requirement that anybody actually cultivate following May 10th, 2016. There's no requirement that anybody put any plants out. There's actually no requirement that any activity occurred at all. The site can be frozen forever. The inquiry that the ordinance asks is, was there a cultivation site present as of that date? So if someone grew in 2015 and came in here and showed you pictures of plants, and demonstrated with date-stamped photographic evidence, that there was a prior grow on that property, there was absolutely no reason, and nothing in the ordinance that says that they have to continue doing it. They can shelve it for as long as they want. Now, they may have to pay Measure C tax on it, because your Measure C tax deals with the canopy size, and not whether there are actually plants there, but that's their choice. So whether or not we continue with that, or anybody continues with that, is in fact not in your ordinance, and I'm pointing that out because the question was raised, so I'm gonna say something about that. We're not really resting so much on the, on the cultivation end, all right? But we do, we do have, you're, you're looking very confused.
I'm gonna interrupt you for just a minute, because I feel like you're lecturing us on our ordinance, instead of explaining to us about the appeal and the issues that we have, and you...
Well, I'm trying to, well, these are issues.
They, they, we understand the ordinance, and you understand the ordinance, it's, you're, you're doing a great job describing it, but you have taken your fifteen minutes now, and we haven't addressed any of the issues in the resolution of the reason that we're here. And I would like to see you move into that position, if you would please.
I will, I'm just...
I understand, but we need to also move into what, what the issues are.
Madam Chair, I'm not used to an appeal, I've done many of these.
Okay.
Where the appellant doesn't put their case on first. Usually, the appellant puts their case on first, so, I'm sort of in the process right now of trying to rebuttal.
Okay, remember, you're gonna get a rebuttal as soon as, as soon as we get through, so you'll get to have a rebuttal period of any concerns that you have that stay safe.
I appreciate that. I'm just trying to explain why I'm a little, I'm trying to eliminate some of the things by dealing with them while they're fresh in my mind. All right, now let me come to the photographs, because I have to hand you some photographs. I didn't realize that we were allowed to use your system to plug our computers in, so I, I made good copies, good copies.
So I'm gonna recommend to you that whenever you go in your future appeals, that you, it sounds like you're planning on doing, if we don't move this forward today, you take the time to pull the procedures down off of the Board of Supervisors, so that you'll know what it looks like there, and be more prepared for it.
Oh, I have all these photographs, I just...
No, I meant procedures, that way you know what you can and can't do.
I don't, I appreciate that, and I thank you for that advice. But as I say, I've never been to this body before, so I didn't, I didn't see your procedures. Okay. May I?
Yes, please, take them to the net, and we appreciate that.
I'm gonna give you the first set here. Could you, would you like?
Not at all.
Oh, yeah, let me, let me take one, two back.
We need to have enough for everybody.
Well, I think I made enough for the board, and for everybody. These are actually your pictures, I'm just gonna reiterate them. I wanna go through these first. Okay. Let me know when you're ready, please.
Some of these, the packets start with different pictures?
Oh, I'm sorry, that's the second set.
Uh-oh. I don't think we have the right stuff going on here.
Oh, you've got a second set, too.
There are three photographs here.
Three photographs, okay, I have three.
They're all, they're all photographs that...
Got it.
That are in the staff report.
Okay.
I just wanna take you through the same chronology that Mr. Contreras did, just so we're all on the same page. Does everybody have these photographs? Okay. Um, first, this is the photograph that, um...
I'm sorry, since you're bringing this paperwork now, could you also hand one to Colleen, so that she can follow along with us?
You know, I, I'm not sure I made it from the public's...
Oh, 'cause we like to provide to the public as we go, and she pays attention to everything.
I have never, I've never been at a hearing where the public is allowed to comment during a pending legal proceeding.
If you, uh, if you ever have occasion to come to us again, go to the website for the Planning Commission, and click on Procedures. It says it all for it.
Can I just say, I'm just, I'm sorry, this is curiosity, have you ever appeared at Planning Commission hearings before, or are you just used to, um...
Not, not in this county, but you don't, your rules are apparently different than others.
But other Planning Commissions?
Yes.
Okay. Not just APA cases?
No, your, your, your procedures are a bit different than what I'm accustomed to.
Okay, thank you. Which is awesome like that.
And that's, I think that's fine, I think that's, I like all of the technology and, et cetera. I mean, I've watched videos of the board meetings, but I haven't, I haven't been able to get these. Uh, when I look for your meetings on your website, they're not there anymore. I don't know where they are.
Oh, no, they're there.
Well, they're not, you know, there's not, they're someplace else.
They're on YouTube. They're all on YouTube.
Oh, there you go.
Okay. So let's keep going.
I'm not a real big fan of you.
'Cause you're twenty minutes in now, I'm counting.
Picture number one is the September 17, 15 picture that Mr. Contreras showed you before.
Yes.
Will you agree on that? Okay. All I did here was to put in red for you where the cultivation site ultimately was, ultimately existed, so you, you'd get an idea. Now, this is a really bad picture in terms of resolution, but I'm, I'm just gonna throw, go through the chronology so you can see this, okay? And by the way, not that I make a field deal about it, but I'll point out that, um, when we submit photographs to the, to the Planning Commission, to the Planning Director, uh, we're supposed to submit date-stamped photographs that have official dates on them. I see most of these photographs, I, I'm not doubting that they are where they are, but, except for the Google Earth pictures that have dates, anybody could've written the dates in, um, but I'll, for the purposes of this hearing, let's assume that they're all, in fact, accurate. All right. Now, Mr. Contreras then showed you this picture, I'm showing you another version of it, 'cause I wanna explain this, all right? This is a picture that the, a photograph, an image, that, uh, I guess was, it was a Google Earth picture. I blew it up for you, just to show you the, the site. Now, I wanna point out here, no one from the staff has ever visited this property. They wrote in the staff report that, that the, this area, the graded area over there, that they call the graded area, is actually, is eighteen thousand square feet. It is not. We measured it. Mr. Albert's is here today. We went out and actually measured the whole thing, not from a, from a satellite, and not using a Google, um, computation, but actually doing it with a tape measure. And what I'm, what I'm, what I did was, I showed you here that we have a photograph, and by the way, again, I wanna point out, um, you, you know this, and I don't wanna be presumptuous. There's nothing in the ordinance that says that the date-stamped photograph has to be the applicant's photograph, and there's nothing that says that the date-stamped photographs have to be on or before May 10th. It simply says a date-stamped photograph that shows a cultivation site, okay? You can go back and read it. But what we have is a June 9th photograph, and what I did was show you where the cultivation site actually is. And you can see delineated, there is the cut road, we call it the spur, that actually goes from the other parcel. You can see the parcel line clearly now, wanted you to ask that question before? That red line is the parcel line. What's below that is where the house and the, and the, and that pond that you saw was, and what's above it is the second parcel. Below is eighty-five thirty-five, above is eighty-four, eighty-five forty-nine. What I showed you was that the only work that we... What I showed you was that the only work that was done, that you'll see in the next photograph, which is the 8/2016 photograph, was outside of that cultivation area. There was some additional grasses removed, and there were three trees removed, but they're outside the cultivation area. And I marked them in yellow for you, so you can see that. That is not actually going to be in dispute here, because the only question is really whether that area, which Mr. Contreras seems to think was 23 or 2400 square feet, is in fact, of 10,000 square feet. That's really going to be the issue. In the third photograph, this aerial image dated August 20th, which is also, again, from the county file, again, I showed you the same area, and this time, you can see that we did admittedly additional removal of grasses on the ground there, but that is not part of the cultivation area. And as one of you noted before, there's no prohibition for a landowner to excavate outside the cultivation area. That was not, N7 does not cover that. Okay. I want to give you a second set of photographs now, with your permission, of course.
Yes, please.
And I want to show you the history of this property, and I guess I want to tell you that this property has been with the same homeowner's family for 30 years. This is not one of those outsiders who came in, that the ordinance talks about, about being concerned about foreigners coming in and buying a buid fire distress property.
We didn't say we're concerned about foreigners. Don't misquote.
So, first picture shows you the, again, this is the staff picture that was taken, that was, I'm going to assume, this is number A, it was taken May 26th of 2014. What I wanted to show you is that, on that date, you can see it better here than he put it, than they put it up here. I want to show you what the, what we call the access road looked like. This is actually the driveway, but it also services as the only ingress and egress point to get over to the top part of the property. The road, the actual public road, you can see in the far-left lower corner, that is Oak Ridge Road. The only entrance to it is through this road, all right? And I wanted to show you what it looked like in 2014. In a minute, I'm going to show, and, okay. Now, I want to, I'm going to give you just a second set of photographs, another set, to fill in the blanks between that and this one, because the next picture is going to be... So the owner of this property was resident and resided in this property until 2010, became demented, went outside the county for dementia care, never returned. Property was basically vacant for a number of years, until he died in January of 2016. In between that time, needless to say, everything got overgrown. The original driveway road had, was overgrown with grass. The rock had been dissipated because of wet weather that you had.
Do you have another set?
Oh.
Because we don't have enough sets up here.
Okay. You don't have enough sets?
Who needs a set?
I do. Or legal counsel does. Oh, wait, 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 there's two clipped together here.
No, 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 they're two different.
No, no, this is the same one. It's just, nope, that's not it.
No, no, they're two different.
It is two different. Okay. Thank you. Okay, we're, I think, I need his.
No, you need his.
Okay.
All right. Go ahead.
All right.
Well, you know, if you need a set, I'll share with him.
Okay, I'll give it back to you.
He's nice like that.
I appreciate that.
And he's...
He doesn't like me, but he's nice like that.
So what I want to show you here is, when I came to this property during Mr. Collard's absence because of dementia, I came on October 10th, 2015, and I took these pictures. The first picture, this is, I'm looking now at the set that I just gave you, okay? These were taken on my iPhone. You can see that I copied for you the date stamps. You can see that they were taken October 10th, 2015, Sheep Ranch, California, which is actually where the property is located. You can see that October 10th picture, you see that there's actually no road there at all. It was completely overgrown. You can see the pump house. You can see the front gate. You can actually see my car, which is parked outside the gate, because I couldn't pull it in because of the risk of fire. The grass was, you can see it, it's all, you know, tinder-based. You guys had just had the buid fire. I wasn't about to fool around with it. Yes?
I didn't say anything. I'm just watching the clock. You're 30 minutes into this presentation.
I know. I told you it's going to take a little bit longer because of the recent pictures.
A little bit, not double time, triple time, so we got it.
This is, the next photograph is another shot of it from the other side. So I wanted to show, what I'm trying to show you here is that when, and the second set, the only thing I wanted to show you was the last photograph. This is the cultivation area. I wanted you to get an idea of what it looked like on February 9th, 2016. It's the last photograph. You can see that it's flat, that it's all, it's just grass covered. There's not a lot of foliage there. Very few trees, very few little bushes. It's flat, all right? It didn't need much prep, okay? Now, the May 1st photograph, what I want you to do is compare those photographs with this, with photograph B, which is this mix...
May 1st, what's that?
Right. County photograph B, where what I've done, again, is, I've showed you that if you, and this, it's, this is one of those terror server pictures, which you can see is just not as clear as the Google Earth picture. But what you can see very clearly is, unlike the 2015 situation, where there was no road, there was no ability to get trucks, cars, or anything in there, what Mr. Larson did, my contractor, who I hired in March of 2016, now, now remember, as soon as Mr. Collard died in January, I took the property over, and I took substantial demonstrable steps to get a grow going. I have it in my affidavit. You can read it. I hired pumping companies. I hired Mr. Larson. I hired fencing people. But the problem is, you had a buid fire here. Everybody was completely busy. They weren't able to come right away. I did get pump go-out, to come out on April 26th. They tested that wellhead. We ordered a solar pump. All the receipts are in there. We spent over $150,000 on this site. The road was reclaimed by Mr. Larson before May 1st. You can see that in this photograph. And then, take a look at the next one. Mr. Contreras put a photograph up on May 31st. Would you put that back up again, please? The May 31st one?
Yeah, that one is for me.
Yeah, I, I took the one that is actually...
There's another one, Exhibit C, that's different.
Yeah. This is actually the one taken from the staff report. It's much clearer than the one over there.
Miguel, who has boxes on it?
I believe Mr. Permer added those boxes.
So far, now, the access road's on a separate parcel of property than a parcel of the...
Correct. So you can see that even the Google Earth picture that the staff uses from May 31st, and I'll get to that in a minute, shows very clearly the new spur road. It's about 600 feet that goes up to that cultivation site, and I've given you actual measurements there of what 10,000 square feet looks like. That enclosed area is, in fact, 43,000 square feet, not 18,000 square feet. Mr. Albert's is here. He measured it with an associate. It's 224 by 194. That's four of the 43,000 square feet. That's an acre. This is a fourth of that. And you can see that there was earth movement going on in that area before, by May 31st. Now, Mr. Larson, who is a 36-year resident of this county, has been a licensed businessman here, I don't know him from Adam. I hired him. I met him once. He did the work. I paid him. He says that that work was done by May 5th. It was done in a matter of two days. He managed to get from what I call the access road down here, which is the common driveway, up there with his heavy equipment and do all of that clearing. I showed you the cultivation site. All he had to do was take grasses down and expose the dirt. He didn't have to do anything more. All of the plants that you saw on that June 17th picture are all on pallets. None of them are in the ground. They're all movable. They're on pallets. All we wanted to do is get the site mowed in effect, so that it'd be easier for vehicles to move in and out, and to, to eliminate the risk of fire, because any grasses that are out there by this time of year turn out to be fire hazards, and we didn't want that. So there is your cultivation site. And you have a combination here. One of you talks about burden of proof. Here's the burden of proof. If I have a declaration under penalty of perjury from the guy who did the work, I wasn't here, I was actually out of the country at the time, that says that he managed to do that very quickly, which he meant in a day or two, or three, and he completed it by May 5th, we don't have any, and coupled with the May 31st photograph, which shows all of that. You don't see any equipment there. You don't see a backhoe still there. You don't see anything. That work was done as of May 10th. It was done as of May 5th. No one has any photographs that would demonstrate otherwise. And the photographs are a problem, and I know you know this, I'm just going to state it for the record. You all know that the urgency ordinance was passed without any prior publication, and the requirement of date-stamped photographic evidence had never been in any prior draft of the ordinance. In fact, Commissioner Worcester, I believe you actually drafted a version of that ordinance that you, that you submitted for review in April of 2016, and if you recall, yours only had affidavits required. You didn't even have photographic evidence. Am I right about that? Can you recall that? I found it on the public website, so it must, must be true. You can go back. But the point is...
I'm not going to comment on that.
Okay. I'm just saying that if you go through all of the drafts that were done from February to May, the whole idea that pictures had to be taken was a brand-new concept. Very few people would have known even to do it. And that's why very few people did. It had never been here before.
Okay, so, so let's get back to something that's really important to me today.
Yeah.
Because you're trying to legally argue the ordinance, and I'm not here to argue that. We're here to talk about, and you want my mic on.
Do you want these photographs now?
He can, he can, but he is so far over his time that I would like for him to get on track, because, I mean, we, I'm sure that right now, because we can read, and we have studied your paperwork, that we have 100 questions for you. So if you have some bullet points that are super important you need to give to us, I would like those, so that we could get down to asking you questions that are pertinent to us, and you being able to say, this is what happened, and you're reading the report wrong, or correct us in any way you may, but let us get to our questions, so that we can process.
Okay. I actually had, I wanted to go through the, the grading issue with you.
Good, please do, because that's, that's part of the resolution. That'll make me super happy.
Okay. Just give me a minute. On this, let me, while I'm looking for those, the bullet point on this is, earth moving was the standard under N3B. I'm showing you that we believe that we've demonstrated that between Larson's sworn testament, sworn declaration, which indicates that he had, that work that is shown on the May 31 photograph done by May 5th, and there's no other photographic evidence disputing the fact that it's clear that by, on May 31st or earlier, all that work was done, and it is definitely earth-moving. I don't, I don't think anybody would question that earth was moved. Mr. Contreras says, oh, he thinks somebody just drove a tractor over there, but nobody ever came out and looked at the property, and we're telling you that that, those grasses were removed. If you look at the cultivation picture that I gave you, which showed that whole field full of grass and full of stuff...
Would you also agree that there was actually more grading done to the land and trees removed after the fact?
Yes, but those are...
Like in 2017?
I do.
And that's the issue that we have. I don't have an issue looking at your photos back in 2014, and May 1st, and May 31st. Where I have an issue is where I go from May 31st to June of 2017, because that is after the fact, and I guess my question would be, did you get a permit from Public Works to do the additional grading and remove trees and bushes?
We didn't. I believe, I asked Mr. Larson whether any of the work that he was doing required any permits under local law, and he said, we're not moving dirt in any way that requires a permit. And I have not been informed by the county, even as of today, that standard letter or whatever it is that Mr. Moore was talking about before. The first we heard of this was on August 10th, when we got the letter, and we've received nothing from the county since indicating that a permit is required. If a permit is required, I'm happy to go back and get a retro permit.
Okay.
But that has not been brought to our attention, and I did ask that question to Mr. Larson. I don't purport to be an expert on your planning laws here, all right? So I did ask that question. He's been doing this for 36 years. I trust in his judgment.
The, the plot map and where you were originally going to grow is not where you're growing, is that correct?
No, it is. It's a rough diagram. These were done, take a look at this. I mean, this was done as an approximation, and the, even the, you can see the road.
Okay.
You can see the cannabis field. You can see the old well. Admittedly, you know, it should have been rectangular this way instead of that way, but...
I don't care what shape it is. I don't bother with it.
I didn't do, you know, I can do the diagram Mr. Albert did.
Shape isn't the issue. The issue is putting it where it's going to go, and you've got it over, over next to that other grow, like on the point of your grow, or your point of your lot there? And instead of having it on the point of your lot, you've actually got it over the property line into the setbacks...
I, I don't know what you're looking at.
Miguel, could you pull up six, the six, Exhibit F, so that I can explain to him what I'm talking about?
Here's the plot plan.
That's the plot map?
Yeah.
Correct? And if you look at Exhibit F?
Yeah.
You show your plot over next to where the property endents. You see the plot next over by the house?
No.
You, on your plot map, you're showing it...
Mr. Albert's drew this by hand.
It's a great picture. It's one of the better plot maps I've seen.
He didn't go out there.
That's not the point. The point is, it's over by the indent, and your grow, if you look at it, and you look at the property lines, is where you've graded, or...
I'll admit, it's not a great diagram, all right? It's...
This is, no, this is good.
It's, what I mean is, he did it, he did it in a hurry to get the application in. We bought, he bought, I don't even know where he got the dimensions from.
There's nothing wrong with this diagram. It's really nice. I actually can read it and understand it. It's good.
Good. Good. But you see, even the house is not probably, it's a rough approximation of how far off the road it is.
Okay.
It's probably not even in the right place as well. It-
Okay, so the plot map, so what you're telling me is the plot map doesn't really matter with the application process?
What I'm saying is that he viewed this as an exemplar, not the equivalent of a survey or what you give to the building department if you're applying for a building permit.
Because you're supposed to be showing me where you're currently growing when you submit your application, but it's not there. It's over here and across two property lines, right?
I'm going to tell you that he thought it-
Is it across two property lines?
No, one property.
Does that area that, up there?
Now, the home, what you're looking at is the, to the left of the first red line is 8535. That's where the house and the pond are. To the right is 8549, that trapezoidal-looking parcel.
So the one that's in the red is not the one I'm looking at?
The one on the top. Oh, thank you.
Yeah, the one in the red.
Red.
Am I missing something here?
This is the parcel of the house. The house will be built here, okay? The public road goes over here. This is the vacant parcel here into your road, right here. I admit, he put it over here. He was just, the road just got in one place.
What you just said is exactly what I'm saying, but you said it differently. But when you look at your white spot, your clean little dirt area where you're cultivating, that is not across two property lines?
One line.
Two parcels, one line.
Two parcels, one line, excuse me.
The survey, and we have a survey.
Okay, good. Love to hear that.
The survey puts the line actually over here, but that is completely irrelevant.
Yeah, probably a little bit. So you're not 75 feet from the property line?
We're over 75 feet from the property line. You see this little, I'm not, you see all these little white spots there?
Did you bring your survey?
No, I didn't. I didn't take any of the survey. No, by the way-
I don't think it's in you. We don't have a 75-foot setback issue on this.
Madam Chair, the planning director has never claimed that there was a setback by a lot.
Okay, that's fine. Keep going, keep going.
I want to show you though, you see, those are the points. They are on this area. They're more than 75 feet from this line. They are. This line is not like you're in, remember? One of the prior applications showed you that this could be off by a lot. The states are actually on-
Not on there's a road.
There's no, there was no issue here about the setbacks, so I don't want to add anything here. What I want to show you, these are the plants, okay? And I wanted to get the other photographs up.
There's plants there?
Well, now there are. 2016-
But not there, not on that picture.
They are. You can see them. I'm going to try to do, you see this?
You can see it.
You see this, well, this whole rectangular? Those are points.
Yeah, they're there.
You could zoom in on it. You should just have a picture.
Oh, okay, I can see it in his picture. Okay.
Okay, so we can-
I'm not seeing it on that one.
See it over here?
See it, I got it.
Right, so let's go to the next, in the next picture. All right, so here's sort of the community issue. So Mr. Contreras is telling you that based on what he saw in the Google photograph-
Can you please get back behind the mic so that it gets recorded? We'd appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Sorry, I forgot about that.
That's okay. Thank you.
Because I'm not used to using this thing. Okay. Mr. Contreras tried to show you an overlay that shows that this is what he perceived to be the original graded area. And so the basis for the, what I'm going to call the recent denial, is if this in fact now is a cultivation area, admittedly, it was not part of the original one, and so they could say that, you know, you graded a cultivation area after May 10th. All right, so what I was going to show you is, could you put the prior picture up for a minute? Can you blow it up in any way? No, okay. The dispute here is that, I'm trying to find these because I brought them. I will show you the overlay that we did, showing you that the plants are in fact within the original cultivation area. And if you turn to the next picture, I'm going to demonstrate to you what happened here. Can you see? This is the spur road that is now more clearly defined than it was back then because I've had them put rock down. And can you see this road over here? The well that services this, there are two wells, all right? The old well, the one that you saw, the hoop house, is right there. You can see the water. You can, that's the solar panel on top of the well. It is right there. That's where the hoop house was, okay? If you go down this road about right over here on the same parcel, is a newly-drilled well that we, that you'll see in the staff, in the file, that an NOI was applied for timely, all right? In June, on June 2nd of last year, of this year, and going on for the last two months, the pump, the solar pump that I paid a lot of money for over here, has not been functioning properly. We needed to get a vehicle down there. The only way we could do that is to take two of these rows that used to be over here, they're all on pallets, and they forklifted them over here. They are now back where they belong. Now, that's why I said that if a notice of violation had simply been sent out, we would have gladly got the forklift out, taken the plants, and put them back, but without that, we had no way of getting the pump go truck, which is a big truck, heavy truck, past this point, up to this point, past the plants, and over onto this road. That's the explanation for this. There's no, there's no real issue. The issue that Mr. Contreras is saying, that to his eye, he thought the graded area was here. I showed you on the photograph, the graded area actually is here. So three of these, or four of these rows of plants, are actually within the original area, and if you looked at the prior picture, you'd see how neat they are, if you could blow it up. Could you just give me the prior picture for a second? You see it's markedly different over here?
That's 2017.
No, that's June 2nd. On June 2nd, all of these were in a confined spot. You can see them. And then if you move over three weeks later, after we had problems with the pump, the guys asked me what to do. I was in San Diego. I said, "Look, you've got to get the truck out there without water. The plants are going to die. Move them temporarily, and we'll move them back. They're on pallets. You take a forklift and put it underneath." You know, you know the drill. Can you, Miguel, could you take a look at the next, the June 26th picture? This is three weeks later, folks. You can't see it over here. This is June 26th. All you see here is these two rows were moved from over here to over here to make room for the truck. If they were put back here, they would look exactly like the prior one. The property line, by the way, goes right here. It's right up against the tree line. This is more than 75 feet. You can come out and measure it. And there's been no dispute about that.
Okay.
All right, so we think that there's a misunderstanding about the grading, all right? There is no grading. There was earth-moving. Earth-moving under your ordinance is different than grading. Grading is leveling. There was no leveling done. Earth-moving is moving dirt. You can go look at the Wikipedia definitions.
No, we know.
Yeah, I know.
We know. We've been down this road a few times.
Right, and by the way, with all due respect to the director, the definition that I saw put up on the board before in another application, using the GEO, whatever that other thing is, that would be great if it were incorporated into the ordinance, but it's not. Grading and earth-moving under this ordinance are lowercase. There is no definition of them, which means that under the law, they are construed in accordance with their ordinary English meanings.
Okay, so you-
Okay, so I think the only dispute we really have here, and I'm happy to hear, you know, is, was there enough evidence that as of May 10th, the original 10,000-square-foot site was there? And by the way, we're talking about 30 feet in one direction or another here, all right? We're not talking about moving a grow to another acre. We're not talking about moving to another parcel. This is a narrow dispute about about 30 feet. And here's an area where I think this commission has absolute discretion to say substantial compliance, all good faith done. We hired all of these people. They did the best they could to get out. The ordinance itself came as a complete surprise. There was no prior publication. It was done as an interim ordinance under 65585, the government code. The first time anybody knew about that version of it was on May 6th, 2016, when it was posted on the bulletin board outside this building. And so I understand that you have a job to do, and I understand that the director's office has a job to do, and we're debating about minutia at this point. And I think I've shown you enough to demonstrate that we have met the proof on the earth-moving under B, N3B, and as far as this grading, the grading would be true if this were in fact part of the cultivation site, and I'm simply telling you that it is not. We did move, we are admitting, we moved the points. As far as the original photograph that was in the application, Mr. Alberts admitted in his declaration that that was a complete error on his part. He filed two applications that day. He got the picture confused from one of his applications to another. If the director had brought that to his attention before the May 15th denial, he would have addressed it.
I have a couple of questions.
Thank you.
One, what basis do you have in your brief on page 2 to say at the hearing, the Board of Supervisors' hearing, "It was determined by the Board of Supervisors that Kelly Farms had been denied due process"?
Well, that was the argument I made, and they agreed.
They agreed to remand. They, I looked at the minutes, and it just says that the appellate's attorney requested the matter be referred back to the Planning Commission for hearing, and the matter was remanded back to the Planning Commission for hearing.
And I watched the video.
Technical legal argument was that that is part of due process.
I understand what your argument was, but you are saying that the Board of Supervisors' said, "We violated due process," and I see no basis for that.
What I said was, what I meant was, that they had determined that it fairly to have a hearing, that we needed to have a hearing in order to allow new evidence to come in because we weren't allowed to produce our evidence.
Okay, I understand that. So you mischaracterized what the Board of Supervisors determined.
If you're troubled by that, I correct it now, okay?
All right.
That's what I thought actually the ruling was.
I am troubled anytime that somebody says I have violated due process, sir, and I think you would be troubled by that also.
I agree with that.
Now, about the hoop house.
Yep.
The site plan shows that a hoop house on it, and shows the well being somewhere else. This hoop house, which is maybe, what, 6 by 12, is now your proof that there was the cultivation or equivalent of cultivation for an area commensurate with the request? Is that correct?
I'm not basing our argument on that. I simply pointed out to you that the director's, the staff had a question about why the hoop house wasn't there on May 31st. It was taken down, okay? I'm relying here solely on B, not on A. That was just a matter of fact.
I'm-
I'm not arguing here that we met the cultivation requirement.
The hoop house is the photographic evidence that you wish had been put in with the registration. Is that correct?
No, I, okay, I'll say this in a different way. I withdraw any argument that we were attempting to comply under 3A, which is cultivation. We're only attempting to comply under 3B, which is earth-moving. So the hoop house is irrelevant.
So the hoop house is irrelevant, yeah?
I'm withdrawing it. It's irrelevant. It's not worth arguing about. It was just, I raised it only because the staff had a question about why it wasn't there in the May 31st picture, and I was explaining it. That's all.
When we have all this paper to consider, it'd be nice to be considering relevant pieces of paper.
I didn't really talk about it that much. I was just pointing it out.
Do you have some questions, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
I understand you're withdrawing any argument that the hoop house photos evidence cultivation. Is that correct?
I am.
Okay, but are those, are those the photos that you originally thought should be included with the application?
We put them into the, into the Board of Director's brief in addition to the earth-moving stuff.
Okay, and those were taken May 8th?
They are date-stamped. They are, in fact, date-stamped.
Okay, and were they taken for the purpose of submitting them with the application? Because that's what your brief says.
No, I simply said that in the brief, that the original photograph was submitted in error. I didn't say anything about those pictures being the substitutes. I simply, it was, that was part of the new evidence, the new evidence. I didn't realize those pictures had been taken.
Okay, so we're not going to concern ourselves with the hoop houses at all?
Let's forget about the hoop house.
Okay, good. That shortens my questions.
Good.
Now, tell me exactly which photograph you're relying upon to show that's date-stamped no later than May 10th of 2016 of grading or earth-moving on this parcel commensurate with the area to be cultivated.
Okay, my response to that is, the photograph that I'm relying on is the May 31st county photograph coupled with the declaration of Charles Larson, who did the work, that it was done May 5th. There's nothing in the ordinance that says that the date-stamped photograph has to be date-stamped before May 10th. It simply says a date-stamped photograph which shows cultivation before May 10th, okay? And we're saying that the cultivation occurred. No one took a picture of it. We didn't know we were supposed to take pictures, that the requirement was brand-new, but in fact, the county found a picture which corroborated Mr. Larson's testimony.
Well, you knew you were supposed to take pictures because you took some on May 8th, correct?
They took pictures just, I don't know why they took the pictures. They didn't put them in the original application because they didn't think they were relevant. They found them later on, and I threw them in the brief. I'm withdrawing them, all right? I don't think it's relevant to the hearings.
Your theory is that the ordinance doesn't require a date-stamped piece of photographic evidence where the stamp is May 10th or earlier, correct?
Correct.
Could it be six months later?
I think that it gets attenuated after six months, and it would be hard to corroborate that. I also think that there would be intervening photographs that would dispute a picture that was done six months later. Here, there are no intervening photographs.
Okay, the ordinance says that the registrant must provide evidence satisfactory to the planning director that no later than May 10th, 2016, he she has taken demonstrable steps, et cetera, and you have to satisfy at least one of these criteria. Date-stamped photograph, the evidence of grading or earth-moving, or date-stamped photographic evidence of cultivation. Now, why would one have a date stamp requirement at all if it didn't tie to the date of May 10th? Why would that make any sense?
I've seen a lot of ordinances and statutes that look like this.
Would you say it's a reasonable reading of this ordinance to say that the date-stamped photographic evidence must be prior to or on May 10th? By reason of the preamble, it says, "That's the evidence you have to have"?
No, I disagree. The preamble is not an active part of a statute.
I mean, the preamble is probably the wrong word, but in N3 of 17.95.165, the date-stamped photographic evidence part in A and B follows the phrase, "The registrant must provide evidence satisfactory to the planning director that no later than May 10th, 2016, he's done these things." And is your position that tying that May 10th date to the date-stamped photographic evidence is an unreasonable interpretation of this ordinance?
My, my reading of it is to the contrary. My reading of it is that if someone provided to the planning director affidavits, declarations, or whatever, which are supported by photographs that demonstrate that, that he can conclude that by May 10th, there was an area cultivated or earth-moved within, commensurate with the cultivation area. The May 10th language would have to be in A or B for it to be clear on that point. It is not.
What you can't find in A or B is that it's okay to supplement a photo with a declaration. That's not it.
That's a reasonable reading of the requirement and not one that's, that is adverse to any other statute that I've ever worked under.
Okay.
You can disagree. I'm just telling you that that's not the way it reads.
That's all my questions. That's all my questions.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question on your position that the board, that the department can't raise new issues. I would agree that the department, during your appeal to the Board of Supervisors, couldn't pop in and into that procedure and say, "Hey, we've got some new, good," in this context, "dirt" on this, but once the board remands it for us to consider it on the merits, I see absolutely nothing wrong with our considering it on the merits as presented to us when we're deciding the merits.
I appreciate your view on that. So the appeal here started on May 30th. The board's action was a continuation of this appeal. It simply said, rather than making a decision, we're going to kick it back for you to reconsider your decision. That's all that happened. The appeal was still the same appeal. The original grounds of denial were under N3.
Our decision wasn't on the merits. Our decision was not to grant the continuation.
No, 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 you also decided on the merits of denying to-
Yes, I'm sorry. You're right. But, okay, I, you understand my position. I understand yours. That's why we can stop.
I'm saying I think it was procedurally incorrect, but then I showed you substantively that I believe that the director's wrong, that actually all those pictures show is that plants were moved temporarily, and what I think the proper procedure would have been is, and what would have been done in any other place, is if a licensee, someone had been granted a license, and a subsequent site visit showed that the plants were in the wrong place, a notice of violation would have been issued. 10-day letter would have been, or 10-day or 30-day, whatever the local procedure is, to correct, and it would have been a correction procedure if it wasn't done, then they would come out and destroy the plants. I don't know what they would do. We've received no 10-day letter. This was done as an addendum to an original denial. I'm simply saying that I think it's administratively incorrect.
I understand.
But we argued it on the merits as well.
I do have another question or two.
Certainly.
On this issue of the planning director's amendment, if you will, or additional ground for denial, if I understand what you said correctly, was the correct procedure would be to revoke the original decision and come out with a new decision, correct?
Right.
Why would that make sense if the original decision, according to the planning director's viewpoint, was perfectly valid? Nothing needed to be changed as to it, but there was an additional ground for denial? Why would you have to revoke the original ground when there's nothing wrong with it?
It's the proper administrative procedure. You don't, you can't, look, I'll give you an analogy. You get a letter from the Internal Revenue Service that says, "You owe additional tax because of reasons 1, 2, 3," and you go into the Appeal Bureau, and all of a sudden, the guy who did the original one now sends you a second letter that says, "While you're there, we found 4, 5, 6, and 7." 7." And then you go to the next level of appeal and they say, "Okay, now we found reasons 9, 10, and 11." That is just not the way you do it.
No, but we've come back to the first level of appeal. We've come back to where you began.
Which was still in an appeal. All right? This appeal was never dismissed. It was still there. All right? Now, we'd be here doing the same thing again, procedurally, all right, you know, we'd be...
I think it's, yeah, your position's very clear.
But you realize, and you've seen enough of these to know this, when the directors, when the, when the staff reviews these applications, they take great pains to try to identify every issue, right, for as a basis for denial. I've seen some of these, they have two or three or four, right? Sometimes five. They could have failure to submit evidence of qualification, of fingerprinting, whatever the, what the sheriff corroborates, evidence of prior criminal record.
We've got one hanging out there that we overturned the denial and she's been flat out told, "You can still get denied as we continue through the process." So, adding additional stuff to your appeal, we could keep finding things as we go. I mean, we have that option to keep, as we keep processing. We, we found a reason, the department found a reason to bring it forward for denial, and that's where we're at here today. I mean, I find, I mean, some of the things you say I find, kind of find offensive and I sit here and I go, "Just, just let him go, let him go." And then I think to myself, "No," because I, I think it was disrespectful whenever we had our first hearing and we are backlogged and we need to get these things moving and we get a letter saying, "I want to continue," it's a couple of days before the hearing, whenever everyone's noticed properly. It's not fair to us. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'd like to go to public comment if all the commissioners are done with their questions because I think it's time we keep moving forward.
I, I have one thing I want to say, Madam Chairman, personally.
I'm not. Yes, please, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm reading from the brief here, page 6, back to hoop houses. "Four true and correct pictures of the erection of a hoop house on the cultivation site, dates stamped on May 8th, 2016, are attached as exhibit 3. These are the photographs that were intended to be attached to the application." That's your brief.
I stand corrected.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I, before you, I'm sorry, before we go to public comment and you sit down, you had indicated you had somebody that you wanted to testify on, testimony on something, Alberts, you said?
I said he was here, I didn't say...
Oh, okay, I thought you wanted him to put something on the record.
No.
No, okay, thank you.
Do I have to sign it, by the way?
You can if you want, it's for Annette, for her to have proper spelling, but I think we've got yours. Thank you. Does anybody have any public comment? No, okay. Then, do you have any rebuttal?
I just wanted some, to point out a few things, or one thing in particular. Mr. Albert has multiple times stated that it was my Miguel Caturas' personal belief that the cultivation site was not on the correct area and that's why we pursued this, this, this reason for denial. I've never stated that. My position is that if you look at the aerial imagery from June 28th, that's on, on the projector, you can see the cultivation area as it is on June 28th. And May 31st, it was never graded, it was never prepared, it never existed. And so, I wanted to clarify that, that's my position, that's why we pursued this reason for denial.
Thank you.
I also just wanted to point out that regardless of what is shown here in photographs of this hearing, the evidence of grading for the purpose of cultivation was required to be submitted with the application and it wasn't. Also, in Mr. Frimmer's brief on page 4, in the footnote, he discusses a, a letter that was sent to the planning director asking for new imagery and said it was not responded. I have that letter and the email correspondence that followed, and he was in fact provided with the documents that he requested. Matt Clark, his local council, picked up the packet that he wanted and Miguel emailed him the photos that he requested, and we have those emails here if the, if the commission wishes to see them.
Do you have anything else to say? I, I do. Mr. Frimmer has tried to paint this as, we're trying to talk about minutia, and I think he's done a very good job of trying to reduce it to minutia, but the real issue is, we did not have the photographic evidence of either cultivation or grading commensurate with the area to be, to, to be cultivated. Grading and earth moving is defined in our grading manual, which is referenced in our grading ordinance, so it is defined by code through the reference to the grading manual. It includes clearing, clearing of vegetation. Clearly vegetation was cleared from this site after May 10th. There is the photograph C in the staff report, it clearly shows that there are a number of tracks that went in and out of that area. That's not grading, that was just simply a vehicle moving back and forth in that area. If you move on to the subsequent photographs of, of August of 2016 and then the current photographs, you know, additional grading obviously occurred after that fact. And the fact that there are now cannabis plants on it are, you know, it was for the purpose of cultivation. So, you know, there's two main reasons why this was denied. Lack of substantial evidence that cultivation occurred or preparation of site, clearing occurred prior to May 10th, 2016, and the fact that he did grade after that fact and for the purpose of cultivation. He brought up the issue about moving the plants and it's really sort of, that is part of the minutia, but if you look closely at both exhibits F and G, you can see that the northern edge of those plants are in the same location. They weren't moved for the purpose of access to the well. They don't appear to be moved at all, it looks like it was just expanded. So, but that's really beside the point. I think that he's done a great job of dissembling and trying to get us to focus on some minor points when the real point is, there was no evidence of cultivation or earth moving and there was grading after May 10th.
There was one photo that you put up, and we'll go to you in just a second, on this one, that was, this photo? And then you showed this, I think it was in the next screen, that it was on a different parcel and... Okay, so when I look at that in relation, it's not on the parcel being grown, it's on the one with the house?
Yeah, it's on the, on the incorrect parcel.
Okay, is the...
Another parcel.
It's not, okay, so it's on the neighboring parcel, not the ones that he owns? Because he owns two.
Correct. And that's where the false and misleading aspect of this falls in.
Okay, and that, that right there, is a registered grow for the house on that property?
That one is, yes.
Okay, so it's not like it was planted over the property line and should have been brought back? Okay, so that is a registered grow. Okay, that was my question, thank you. Yes, please, thank you.
Just a little bit more grief. I want you to keep that picture up here for a minute.
Okay.
Okay, so, just to clarify what you're asking, that property on which that grow exists is Mr. Albert's property.
Okay.
He filed two applications that day, one for that grow and one as a tenant for this grow. He put that picture mistakenly on this application. It's a dupe.
That makes more sense to me. That's probably the clearest thing I've heard all day.
But he...
I tried to explain it before, but you've given me...
That made more sense to me.
You've withdrawn the idea that he intended to put in the hoop house, so we have no picture.
So, yes, at that, so the application really has no picture, but that's not really, you know, all right, and I want to, let me just make a few points. I appreciate Mr. Moore thinking that, you know, that I came up here to argue, you know, totally minutia, but this, this issue about grading versus earth moving is very, actually very important under this ordinance. And when you come to, and I want to just, just touch on this for one more minute, N3B, A rather, which is what we're relying on, you notice that these words are in the, in the disjunctive. You show either grading and/or earth moving. If grading and earth moving meant the same thing, then they wouldn't have had to put both words in. You know, the standard rule of statutory construction is that every word has meaning, you can't read it out. Now, if you turn to N7, you see that there's three sentences there, okay? The first sentence is pretty, pretty simple, "All grading and earth moving." There's a difference between the two. Shall have been completed other than grading, not earth moving there, but grading, grading is leveling in the normal ordinance to comply with the setback requirements, right? Next sentence, "A registrant seeking to conduct grading." Here, there's no mention of earth moving. Now, we're talking about grading. "Grading for the purposes May 10th must provide a copy of a grading permit." If somebody doesn't grade but earth moves, they're not covered under this. You went through this in another application earlier today, all right? The last sentence again comes back and talks about both. "No additional grading or earth moving for the purpose of establishing a cultivation site can be done after May 10th." There's no question, that's not what we did. We didn't intend, those extra grasses that were removed had nothing to do with the cultivation site. And Mr. Moore may think, "Oh, you know, they look pretty neat and whatever." The picture that you see on June 2nd that was taken from, looks like, 20,000 feet, doesn't show as clearly as the picture that you saw from June 26th of the rows of plants, all right? This is not, we're not dancing on pins here, all right? My, I'm, I am actually the landowner here, I authorized the movement of those plants because the truck had to be there, all right? I've never seen that picture until June 26th, but we admit that. Now, we can, we can have disagreement over whether or not you think that that's, that that is accurate, but the fact is, my testimony as the landowner and the person who ordered it is that that's exactly what happened. Now, that's not minutia, that's fact. Now, you can, now, so, okay, let me get to the next point. The, I think I touched on the photo, I touched on the grading or earth moving, and, okay, so, Mr. Moore made a good point, all right, which we're not, which we're not disputing. We don't fault the director for denying the original application based upon the lack of photographic evidence. He was doing his job. There's no fault, we never said that that was wrong. The ordinance only requires that you demonstrate it, okay? Now, if someone had called and said, "Hey, wait a minute, you got the wrong photograph here." All right, the actual, actual person in the staff that reviewed that application was somebody named Ben Diamond, am I correct? Well, if you look at your, if the file that you gave me, Ben's report is the last page of that file, I take it it was Ben Diamond, correct?
It could very well be Ben, or it could very well be that Ben was the last person to see that.
Okay. Nobody from the director's office called Mr. Albert, you know, who's been a resident here for 52 years, they have his phone number, it was right on the application, and said, "Hey, this picture that you put in here was actually the one on your property, do you have better pictures?" So, we don't fault it, what we're saying is, why do we have to come to appeal to do exactly what we could have done, which is get Mr. Larson and the May 31st photograph up to the director? And they could have reviewed it so that there was no question that he had enough evidence at the time to rule on it. But I understand that's not done here. There's no follow, there's not necessarily follow-through with the people on, for example, what if the indemnification that's supposed to be in the application is...
I can explain part of that for you, because this was put in place as an urgency ordinance. Our county was suffering under health and safety because of the mass influx that happened quickly.
Right.
And we didn't get an opportunity to put an permanent ordinance in place. We had to do an urgency ordinance to stop what was happening. That urgency ordinance was written, that urgency ordinance was passed by four fifths of the board and brought down, and then the appeals started and the process started. The planning department doesn't have the ability to look at that urgency ordinance and say, "Hey, let's call 1,000 people and say, 'Can we get a different photo from you?'" And then whenever they send out the denial letter and it comes before us, we don't have the right to overrule what the supervisors have given us. We don't make the legislative rules, all we do is apply what we read, interpret it, and say, "Did you follow these guidelines, yes or no?" If they did and the, and we don't think that the planning department ruled fairly because it was, they followed it according to what we can see with the evidence they bring forward and their proof, then of course we're going to overrule the planning department, but vice versa. If we look at the urgency ordinance and you did not follow it, black and white, we don't get to change that, that urgency ordinance. It is black and white for this planning commission. So, when we look at this, and you're not the first one that's come through, I am sure you have watched video after video or have read different appeals that we've denied, and you've seen that whenever we've had photos that come through, they're considered false and misleading. We don't get to make up our minds and change it, the ordinance, we just don't. We don't get to say, "You know what, Miguel, darn it, you should have picked up the phone and called him, shame on you." We have to follow the urgency ordinance and it's black and white. It says, "Was the photo evidence misleading?" Or, "Wrong." Yeah, it is wrong. And it, maybe you don't intend for it to be misleading, but for us, it's evidence as an application being submitted that's not accurate. I, I look at the progression of your photos from starting before the application was submitted coming forward. There's definitely changes to the land, you can see it, and, and I know, I, I would take you as a man of integrity, sitting here with me if you were on this side, right here next to me, whom I argue with a lot.
I don't know that.
You would sit there and look at that photo and say, "Wow, you've made a lot of changes over the last year and a half." Anybody looking at those photos would feel that, see that, recognize that, and then also when we have before us a photo that shows five layers of plants, but they belong to an, oh, sorry, they belong to another registration, if we took the time to call 1,000 people and have them over and over and over again, we would never have gotten as far as we have in this process. It was, it was an urgency ordinance for a reason, for health and safety. We don't, we don't have the opportunity to sit and go one by one, project by project, this is, it's black and white. We, we're voting black and white, we've got to keep this process rolling. I understand a lot of the things that you said, I think it's great, and I'm sorry, I was a little bit frustrated. It gets towards the end of the day and it's like, "Okay, I know you're trying to make sure you get it on..."
I'm trying to...
No, you don't need to be sorry. You get on the record that, "You guys need to know how to read your urgency ordinance." Well, that's all that we've done all year and Kelly and I, the year before, and so we get that, so I was just like, "Oh," and getting frustrated, and I apologize for my reaction, but it, it's not that you're not right and you're not trying to interpret it, it's not that you're wrong, it's just that we have sat here time and time again and seen photo, 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 and, and some of them, I will tell you, intentionally submitted bad photos. I'm not saying you did that, I'm not saying yours wasn't a mistake, but I'm telling you that it's not the evidence that we needed to be able to approve of this application in my interpretation. I'm not all of the commission and I don't get to make the rule by myself, obviously.
So, I'm going to give you the quick response to that.
Okay, cool, go.
First. When I said, when I was referring to what the planning director's office does, that is entirely different than what your role is.
Right.
I don't dispute that your role is pretty limited, all right? But on the other hand, you have a lot of discretion here. This is not as black and white as you make it out to be, because this ordinance is not really carefully drafted. There's a lot of holes in it.
There might be, but it was, it was a rush.
And I hope they fix it, I don't know what's going to happen next week, there are all kinds of rumors around.
Yeah, nobody does, right?
Okay. I was simply pointing out the difference in the roles and that it's important at a level, the lowest level of the administrative process, whether it be over at the building inspector's office, or the code people, or the guys that approve building permits. Well, once you have to come to an appeal, right, you're, you have a much more limited role, and you, I'm agreeing with you on that.
I, I understand that, but...
And so, all I said, and I, and I wasn't taking issue with it, I was simply saying that I agree with Mr. Moore that based upon what they saw on May 15th of this year, when the first denial letter came out, I would have denied it too. I'm not arguing that point. I'm simply saying that rather to have than spend two hours, I'm sorry I did, or an hour, whatever, hour and a half.
I'm clocking you.
And I'm, and I'm sure I'm gonna, I'm sure I'm gonna get a nasty letter in the mail.
No, you're not.
Instead of having to spend an hour and a half arguing with five distinguished people over limited stuff, right, a lot of this can be dissipated in some respect if the process allowed for the same approach that the guys, and I'll give you an example, if I apply for a building permit tomorrow and I have to, I have to give them a diagram, it has to be on a certain sized paper, and it's not a paper that everybody has, it's like 22 inches by 40 inches or something. Has to be very detailed, it has to show every electrical, all of those stuff. So, if they, if you bring in these 20 documents that you have to do, I've seen it because I was over there, what they do is they go through each one and they say, "Okay, we'll take a look at it and we'll get back to you if we need anything else."
You know why? Because that is a permitted application. What we're doing is not a permitted application, it was an urgency ordinance, stopgap, and it is a registration, it's not a permit. Now, there's one thing that you like to give examples and, and I think I need to give you one as well. When you say, "We have a lot of freedom here to maybe make some, overturn some decisions," we don't. And I'll tell you why. You sat here today and watched an example of it. Since I have been sitting here, two have been overturned, period, two. And those two come up over and over and over and over again. So, if we don't live by black and white, every attorney coming down through those doors and right there where you're standing is going to say, "Now, my case looks just like this one that you overturned." We will never get anywhere. So, for us to not rule black and white consistent would be putting our county in a very bad way, and I'm not willing to risk my county, love it too much. So, anyway, I think we need to wrap up, so if you've got any last rebuttal, give it to me.
My last response on that is?
Yes.
Every application that you processed today, you ruled correctly, okay? This is different. This turns on the combination of a declar... I would prefer you didn't do that. This is, I don't think this is funny, actually. The combination of a declaration and a date stamped photograph that shows what we're saying, which is that substantial steps were taken to develop a cultivation site by earth moving commensurate with the size of the project, that is the issue. You can decide as a matter of fact that we didn't prove our case, all right, or you can decide that in fact we're close enough or that we did. I mean, as far as the grading, you know, you can choose to take the testimony that we've given, that the plants were temporarily moved and that we agree that if in fact we had expanded the site, then the grading issue would have been appropriate, or you can simply say based, you know, the, the director's argument, I'm not degrading it, I'm just saying, they're basically saying, "Based upon our naked eye, without coming out to the property, this is what it looks like on an aerial photograph."
Well, I think...
That's the issue.
And, and I, I really appreciate it and I think we're going to close rebuttal. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for that. Thank you for the extra time.
Absolutely. The... Absolutely. So I'm going to bring it back to, I'm going to close the public hearing, bring it back to the commissions for deliberation. And I don't know who wants to start, I'm happy to, you're happy to, wherever, whichever direction you want to go.
I'll go ahead.
Pardon me?
I'll go ahead.
Okay.
I think it's clear that there is no evidence of cultivation before May 10th of 2016, under 17.95, .165 N3B. The only formerly proffered evidence was the hoop house photos, and those have been withdrawn as a basis for arguing that there was cultivation, and so there is nothing left on that issue. That leaves the grading or earthmoving issue. There are no pre-May 10th, 2016 photos that show grading or earthmoving for the purpose of cultivation. My view of the May 31, 2016 aerial, I don't see anything like the grading that took place later. In fact, I don't see any grading in that photograph, it's just not there. I am not prepared to accept the argument that by requiring a date-stamped photographic evidence, that, that that provision is divorced from the date of May 10th, 2016, when it, it appears under the, the language that requires demonstrable evidence of compliance by that date. And so I, you just can't submit a date-stamped photograph six months later and say it satisfies The photos also show rather clearly that there was grading after May 10th, and it certainly shows up by August 20th of 2016. And while that photo doesn't show any cultivation, the photograph of June 28th, 2017 most assuredly does on the same spot. And so I think it's a fair inference that this grading was for the purpose of cultivating, and it was after May 10th of 2016. And I'm fairly sure I heard in admission by council that they, meaning the planning department, can say that there was grading at a cultivation area after May 10th of 2016. And so I'm prepared to support the recommendation on all grounds.
I'm also prepared to support the recommendation by planning. There's a lot of issues, I think, with a lot of the photos up here, not going to go into details about any of them, this one right here is disturbing to me. False or misleading? That was my issue with the last one, the false or misleading, that's my issue with this one.
After such a long hearing, and at the end of the day, you both have been very clear, and I clearly agree with you.
I too agree. So what I would like to do at this point, Miguel, if you could read the recommendation, please?
Of course, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt Resolution 2017-709, thus denying this appeal.
Thank you.
Before we do that, on, on the resolution, in paragraph three, the, the evidence section doesn't refer to the cultivation. It just refers to earthmovement that took place after May 10th. But it's the photo of June 28th, 2017 that does show the cultivation.
Correct.
And so it seems to me that there should be added that the photograph of June 28th, 2017 depicts cultivation at the same site that was graded.
One change I would suggest is in the evidence under finding...
Can we break?
Uh, under finding one, I'm not finding, oh, there, okay, under finding one. The second sentence of the evidence says one of, oh, never mind, I was going to suggest we put in alternative, but you say one of the minimum requirement. Well, I still think a good, be good to put in the word alternative before minimum. You don't have to have photographic evidence of cultivation, you can have photographic evidence of earthmoving or grading. So I'd suggest we put in alternative before minimum.
I think that's a good change.
Yep.
Commissioner Laddish, what, I was just writing notes on the previous comment from Commissioner Booster.
It's under, evidence under number one.
Number one, okay.
The second sentence, one of the, and then insert the word alternative...
Minimum.
Before minimum.
All right, thank you.
Okay, I think I've got one more.
Okay. I've got, I've got about four minutes left before we run out of film on the camera, so I'm getting...
I'll be real quick.
Okay.
Under number three, at the bottom of page, whatever it is. It says the last sentence is, "A registrant engaged in earthmoving activities beyond the May 10th, 2016 deadline should add for the purpose of establishing a cultivation site."
I'm not limiting anybody on their time, if we need to take a break is all I'm saying.
I don't have anything else.
Okay. Is everybody good?
Yes.
All right, so I'll need a motion for, as amended?
Yes.
My second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, 4-0, and one abstention. Thank you.
And as usual, this is appealable to the board of supervisors within 15 calendar days.
Okay.
We're officially in break.